Good evening and thank you all for coming to tonight's special presentations. Today is March 7, 2023, and tonight we will recognize a few individuals here from across our community. I'm gonna come down here to the microphone up front and we'll get started with the special presentations. Well, good evening. Want to start this everyone once again. Always a pleasure to see familiar faces and a lot of new faces here as well and for everyone watching at home, welcome. Tonight, we will recognize some of Moreno Valley's most dedicated athletes. But before we do, I would like to recognize Moreno Valley Unified School District for their dedication, innovation, and brilliance. MVUSD is creating trailblazers of tomorrow and we're highlighting a few of them here today. Being a high school athlete comes with great responsibility. Family, friends, teammates, teachers, and achieving your personal goals as well. It is no doubt that student athletes become role models for those students that come after them for generations in the future and for all of us as well, reminding us of what we might have been able to do if we didn't do sports back in high school. With us today, we do have student Remy Murillo with us accompanied by several of his, you know, folks from his school and from MVUSD. We have the athletic director, Justin Remington, here with us. We also have principal Sean Roberson as well and coach Jason Lowe, as well as a few other folks from the district. So at this time, if you could please join me up here at the mic and feel free to come on up. Everybody who's accompanied with you so that we can give you a nice certificate of recognition. If we could please give them a round of applause as they come up as well. And with that, we, we want to just highlight some of the accomplishments that Remy Murillo and some of his colleagues as well. There were three other students who we were going to recognize here tonight. Unfortunately, they're not gonna be able to make it, but a lot of amazing things that are happening. And for Remy in particular, your sport is wrestling, is that correct? And so I recently saw that not only did Remy and his colleagues actually win here locally at the county level, but you're also headed to the state level, is that correct? So you're, you're going to be competing for even bigger trophies and bigger championships out there as well. So we, we wish you the best in that endeavor. But for, for today, we want to just recognize you for, let me make sure I'm, I have the right one here. From Canyon Springs High School, once again. Yeah, let me just make sure. I had all four students up here and I wanna make sure I have the right one. Apart from, just one second. Okay. Here we go. So Remy Murillo is a solid 126 pounds and expresses dominance on the mat. Remy is also a junior here at Canyon Springs High School and is a leader similar to his upper weight counterpart. Mr. Murillo actually won first place at this season's Southern Section Finals and took a hard fought sixth place at the state level. So that's, that's where I was getting to there. And like I said, there were a few of his classmates actually that we were going to recognize here today. And I know we have some other folks here in the crowd as well. But without further ado, I do wanna give an opportunity for, for everyone here behind me to maybe share a few words about the work and the accomplishments that your students are, you know, continue to rack up and maybe also give you an opportunity to share a few words if you'd like. So I'll open up the mic, open the floor to you. Anybody that wants to come up and say a few words, you're, you're more than welcome to come up.
Hello, good evening. Just a little bit about, about Remy. It's his second year here at Canyon Springs. Last year, he was a CF champion, second in the Masters, which is the Southern Section Championships, and second in the state last year. Went on to Virginia Beach and competed in the Nationals and placed second there last year. Came back this year, repeated as a CF champion, was a Southern Section Masters champion and placed sixth at the state. He'll be leaving here in about a week and a half, two weeks to go back to Nationals to try to do one better at the Nationals, took second last year. And most importantly, he, freshman year was his COVID year, distance learning. He had to make up for that as a lot of students did. So on top of all the hard work that he's doing, putting on the mat, he, I'm proud to say he got a 4.0 at the semester grade point average. So he's continuing to make up for his freshman year and doing his credit recovery on top of all the hard work and getting straight A's. So that's a big accomplishment and we're really proud of him. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Again, very proud of Remy and all of his accomplishments as coach said, on the mat. But at Canyon Springs, we talk about our, our student athletes as student athletes. They're students first, so it's exciting to hear that Remy is, is maintaining in the classroom as well as on the mat. And he's excelling in both areas and so we're very excited and proud of him. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank my coaches and my dad for supporting me. My coaches really helped me a lot with the training and especially the grades this year. It was my main focus, bringing up the grades and, yeah, I'd just like to thank my coaches and my dad for supporting me and helping me.
On behalf of the Board of Education Cabinet and our superintendent, Dr. Martin Rex Kedziora, we'd like to say thank you for this exceptional honor for our student. And we also like to congratulate our student for doing such a fantastic job and being an exemplary athlete and student. So thank you, Remy, for doing a marvelous job and representing our district very well. And I'd also like to say thank you to the principal and the staff and the athletic director of Canyon Springs High School. And we wish you great success, Remy, and keep on keeping on.
Thank you so much for, for that. And as you can see, there's a lot of support behind Remy and his classmates and colleagues as well. And we wish him the best. The entire city is gonna be cheering you on as you continue on in your athletic career and endeavors as well. And so today, we do have a certificate for you. And we're also going to send certificates home with all of you so that you can get them to Sonny Kling, Kyrie Rubio, and Alexis Jimenez on all of the things that they're doing and accomplishing in their athletic careers as well. So with that, we're going to present the certificate that we have right over here. On behalf of the City of Moreno Valley, the City Council, and, and our entire community, we offer and present the certificate of recognition to you, Remy Murillo, on all of your accomplishments. And we wish you all the very best on everything moving forward. Congratulations. And if we're gonna, we could get a quick picture here and then if you have any family or any other friends, if they'd like to come up here as well, please feel free to join us up here at the mic. I think we have some family here with them. If we could give them a round of applause as well. A lot of amazing things happening here in the city of Moreno Valley. And Remy is one prime example of everything that's happening here. So that, that will conclude our special presentations for today. But we will resume at 6 o'clock for our regular city council meeting. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to our regular city council meeting. Today is March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Welcome to the joint meeting of the city council of the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The city council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three at six P M. The pledge of allegiance will be led by... Anyone care to do the pledge? Okay. The pledge will be led by Mayor Protem Delgado, and then please remain standing for the invocation given by Pastor David Rivera of Oasis Community Church.
Please join me.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, city council members, staff, and residents of our city. Please join me in this prayer. Dear Lord, we gather in this place this evening as elected officials, residents, and business partners of our local community here in Moreno Valley. Our purpose is to discuss the public and civic needs of our city and its residents to seek the common good for all who reside within our city, for all who visit our city and do business here in Moreno Valley, that in all matters with respect for one another, we work towards the common good of all, no matter their need or their standing here in our community. Lord, I ask your blessing on our mayor, our council members, the public and city employees, for our fire department, police department, and all law enforcement. We pray for their safety, their protection, for their health and that of their family members, that as they do the work before them, they do it with all sincerity for all the residents of our city, and that collectively, we work for the common good of everyone. We ask that as we gather here this evening, and as we go about our business and our daily lives, that we do so with all humility and respect for one another. I ask, Lord, for your wisdom, clarity, and a spirit of cooperation and compassion as we work amongst each other here to do the work that is needed for the good of everyone in a wholesome way for all parties involved. Watch over us, Lord. Watch over every man, woman, and child in our city here in Moreno Valley. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor David Rivera, once again from Oasis Community Church. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Marcus.
Here.
Councilmember Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Protem Delgado.
Here, ma'am.
And Mayor Cabrera.
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Jane Halsted, City Clerk.
Oliver Advica, Deputy City Clerk.
Patty Rodriguez, Senior Deputy City Clerk.
Stephen Cantonea, Interim City Attorney.
Mike Lee, City Manager.
Brian Mohan, Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Michael Lloyd, Assistant City Manager for Development Services.
Maniam Montz, Community Development Director.
Melissa Walker, Director of Public Works.
Jeremy Bubnik, Director of Parks and Community Services.
Ken Reichel, Chief Police.
Jesse Park, Fire Chief.
Thank you very much, staff. Always, always very nice to see you here. A reminder that the city is currently offering Spanish translation services if anyone is interested in this feature. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful toward others, especially toward the individuals speaking. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting and to share their views about issues concerning our city, but we can be more productive by being civil and respectful toward one another in this meeting. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments will be limited for each speaker, and I encourage everyone to refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree or disagree with the prior comments. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff may be addressed during the council closing comments. That brings us to public comments on matters not on the agenda. And once again, just a friendly reminder, if you would like to speak on any particular item, we're now coming to public comments on non-agenda items. But if anyone would like to speak, we do have those golden rod speaker slips over on the tables by the door. Just fill one of those out for whatever particular item you'll be speaking on, submit that to our bailiffs, and we'll make sure to call on you when we get to that point in the meeting. Each speaker will be allowed a total of three minutes to comment on any and all items which are not on the agenda, which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. We will now take public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on non-agenda items?
We have two, two speakers.
Okay, let's go ahead and call those up.
Okay, we have Candace Thomas, followed by Daryl Terrill.
Good evening, Miss Thomas. Yes, right up here.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight I'll be speaking on behalf of the Moreno Valley Historical Society, and we thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Candace Thomas, and I'm currently serving as our president. Myself and members of our board are here tonight to introduce the society to our mayor, council, and city officials, or reintroduce, for those of you who may have already heard about us. We're a nonprofit organization, and our purpose is to research, preserve the historical and connected artifacts of Moreno Valley, and to share those and educate citizens about the history and artifacts of Moreno Valley. As our group expands, we want to fill you in on some things we are proud of recently. We've expanded our board with some valuable members and acquired several new members to our society, and even a couple of business members. We've partnered with local businesses to establish a monthly cruise night and dine-in fundraiser where we connect with lots of community members and their rolling historical treasures, and of course, encourage shopping and dining in mobile. We've sponsored a street through the Beautify Mobile program, partnered with the Moreno Valley Unified School District and their History Day competition, and are even supporting in the county level this year. We've partnered with the Moreno Valley Library Iris Branch in their effort to, I'm sorry, in an effort to help fulfill our mobile stories initiative. We have a few displays and city buildings for public viewing. We're proud to announce we've gained over a thousand new followers on social media in the past year, and we currently have over sixty-three thousand followers on our Facebook group page, which we encourage anyone to take a look at if you ever want to brush up on Moreno Valley history or read some awesome stories. We have a newly established Instagram account with a growing following, and something we're most proud of is we've continued to hold educational presentations for our community and members, and it's something that has continued since the Historical Society established in nineteen eighty-four. We have an upcoming presentation set for March nineteenth on the history of fire prevention in Moreno Valley, which is being presented by Cal Fire. And we'd like to invite each of you to the presentation if it fits in your schedule. It will be held at the Edgemont Community Center from five-thirty to six-thirty P M., and we'd love to have you there. And if it's okay with y'all, we can provide you with more information and details via email of our upcoming events. Each of our endeavors allows us to connect with people, provide historical and informative information, preserve our history, and we're looking to expand, make more connections, and hopefully eventually gain the knowledge, input, and support of our city council. Mayor Cabrera has generously accepted our request to meet and discuss in further detail who we are, what we do, and what we're hoping to grow for our community, so we thank you for that. And we're grateful for the opportunity to speak tonight and looking forward to your input, support, and ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to confirm that event, thank you for the invitation. That was five-thirty to six-thirty at the Edgemont Women's Center, and what is the date of that event?
Sunday, March nineteenth from five-thirty to six-thirty.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next three speakers are Daryl Terrill, Sarah Lidle, and Christopher Baca.
Good evening. My name is Daryl Terrill. When A B fourteen eighty-two became state law, it was supposed to protect our residents against no-fault evictions. Even with these protections, more of our residents continue to find themselves at the receiving end of eviction notice and homelessness. However, under A B fourteen eighty-two, we can enact an ordinance that is more protective than A B fourteen eighty-two. It has to be more protective than, as I said again, fourteen eighty-two. If it does, our ordinance will supersede state law. This is what I'm bringing to the table tonight. I'm submitting into the public record a proposed residential tenant protection ordinance. Its aim is to protect our residents from eviction through no fault of their own. This proposed ordinance goes a step further than A B fourteen eighty-two by imposing stricter requirements on those pursuing no-fault evictions. One of those provisions stipulates that apartment owners must pay tenants reallocation fees up to two months' rent. State law exempts fifteen years or older, or younger, I'm sorry, but this proposed ordinance applies to all apartments. Also, this proposed ordinance exempts an owner living on a property renting no more than two units or bedrooms. In addition, under this ordinance, tenants who get an F-fault eviction notice will be given more time to remedy their violations. Currently, there is no requirement to allow a renter to fix an issue before being served an eviction notice beyond the minimum state noticing laws. Furthermore, it identifies eight more types of landlord harassments than the state, including not allowing a landlord to verbally abuse or threaten a tenant or influencing a vacancy through fraud or coercion and refusing to pay their rent if some of their, if their property, if there's substantial damage, not caused by them, but because the tenant decided, the owner decided not to fix it for whatever reason. This ordinance intended to encourage landlords and tenants to resolve their disputes, but the city will step in in some situations, including appealing to the property owners for fraud, threats, or shutting down a tenant's utilities. So what I'm presenting to you is a first step in providing protection to our residents who live in apartments. We got a lot of people live in apartments. This hope brings protection to these folks. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Christopher Baca, Sarah Lidle, and Tom Gerald Senior.
Good evening, council, community, and staff. I'm here to talk about predatory towing practices from a local tow company that the city has a contract with, who is Peppis Towing here in Moreno Valley. If you Google Peppis Towing, you'll see how many communities have been suing this corporation for predatory towing practices and suing many cities because they feel they're not being put in the rotation. I would suggest the city would remove them from the, from the rotation until the lawsuits are settled. But I'm here because it actually happened to myself. In my apartment complex, in which I have a permit to park, and I, the, I've given the management my copy of my D M V. Peppis Towing is going at three, four in the morning and checking to make sure people are displaying their, their, you know, disabled placard. People forget sometimes. People forget to put them on there. And I believe that was an illegal tow, and they're doing that out of, you know, it's predatory practices where they're just trying to make money. How is it that? I'm not trespassing in that property. I live there. I have a permit to park there. Okay, there, and, and the management company knows that I have a placard. So this predatory towing company is out there checking to see who forgets to put their placards on there and tow the car away in which they should have, they have no right to tow these cars away because there's no signage that says tow away. It says fine. There's a fine. Okay, so therefore, at that point, they should have called the management and got an approval for a tow, but the management would have said, oh, he does have a placard. He, you know, he just forgot to put it on. So that's, you know, it's totally immoral, especially. It's unethical. And, you know, for, you know, I'm just, I'm talking for other people, in case that happened to other people, that they forget to put their, their placard on and their car gets towed away. That's four hundred dollars down the drain just to forget to do this. If you're in a shopping center or anywhere else, sure, you get, you get, you know, your fine. You get your, your two, three hundred dollar fine. You file a paperwork with the court and with proof, you know, you end up paying thirty-five dollars or something, and they dismiss it. Okay, that's what should have happened, but no. Peppis Towing is illegally doing this. It's very illegal and unethical. Thank you very much.
The next three speakers are Sarah Lidle, Tom Gerald Senior, and Donovan Siddique.
Hello. All right, as you guys know, my name is Sarah Lidle, and I'm here on the behalf of the homeless community as me being homeless myself. It's been exactly one month since the last time we met with each other, and just a quick little update. So I'm still currently still homeless. I'm staying currently at home, say, is up until Friday, in which I pray to God that Salvation Army puts me into another place, but then I have thirty days left with them in order to find permanent housing. And as you guys know, that that's extremely hard. I, can you stop? Sorry. So, um, I don't qualify for housing, and that's my biggest issue. It's trying to find an apartment complex or find an individual renter who would rent to me and my son. I keep getting the options of renting a room, but I currently have a storage full of things, right? So with that, I can't rent a room and obtain my storage because that's the cost is just uncostly. On my last paycheck that I just made, I made one thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-eight cents for the month. Not a week, not two weeks, but the month. So finances is hard. I did apply to things together. I did get hired, but only as a substitute leader. That's not gonna give me a difference essential cost to sustain living on a monthly basis, right? My food stamps will be cut out of this month because I now make over that cap. So now me and my son really have to go to the food banks and try to pinch our ways to try to get food. And if we don't have permanent housing or a place to go cook, right, how are we gonna cook these items? That kind of like defeats the purpose of going to get food and not having the work to cook it, right? So I come again today asking for more resources, asking for the community to help me, asking to put me in a direction because I have thirty days in time back in my car. And I don't know if y'all know, but y'all seen the snow last week? It's cold, right? I'm fat, but I stay cold. Like, I'm not trying to be back in the car. I don't know what else to do. Once again, I got a call from HUD others today talking about you're on the waiting list, but there's nothing that we can do to expedite you, right? And I don't know what that really means because if I'm asking you for help and you're calling me, telling me something I already know, that's kind of pointless, right? Like, I know how it works, but I'm asking, give me some more guidance or put me in a better direction so I can get on my situation because after the sixty days, who's gonna pay for my hotels? Who's gonna provide us food? Who's gonna provide us our shelter? If I get rid of everything in my storage, how do I get all that? us our shelter? If I get rid of everything in my storage, how do I get all that back? So, you know, something to ponder about. Just a quick little update, just to keep you on your toes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Tom Gerald Senior, Donovan Siddique, and Michelle Davis.
So we have somebody enjoying the position here with their mom. Tom Gerald Senior speaking on behalf of myself and Mayor Cabrera, Mayor Portem Delgado, and council members, members of staff and the public, both here in the chambers and watching at home. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Well, I wanted to continue to acknowledge our increased police activities, you know, patrol and stuff in our area there. It has definitely made a market to help, and things have been a bit quieter. We had a rash of incidents right during the holidays, which were problematic, and we're still digging out from. But so hopefully they'll be subdued. And also, we had some service by the fire department recently, and so we appreciate their prompt and thorough service. So maybe a bit of a firebug running around, so we're coordinating with them on that. And then finally, I just wanted to, there was a small air made at the end of the last meeting when Mayor, and I'm not calling the mayor out, it was just an honest air, because you referenced Tom Korsak and Lou of Mr. Tim Cassett. And, but what was ironic, I thought that we had Patricia Korsak had served on the planning commission for a number of years, and I don't know, she still lives in the city. She's an active artist, and I didn't know she had a family member or something. So I thought maybe there was some crossover there, but I understand there's gonna be a correction made on that. But I did want to say that the Tim I knew was a jovial guy, and he would wear it as a badge. He'd get a big chuckle out of it. And so, good-natured man. And as I said previously, when he won the citizen of the year award, I thought this kind of people we should be honoring, you know, very down-to-earth, how can I help you type gentleman. And I never heard a crass thing about the man, anybody interfaced with him. So, so I just want to share that, and thank you very much.
The next three speakers are Donovan Siddique, Michelle Davis, and Stephen Figueroa.
Okay, let me get those three minutes. If you want to put another one on there, that'll be great, too. All right. Good evening, Council, Mayor, and staff. You guys are doing a really great job. Just got back from the Dominican Republic. I loved it, only to come back to snow, which is really not good. But first of all, what I want to talk about is you are invited to the open forum on Thursday, March 9, 2023, at the Edgemont Community Center from 11 until whenever with Councilwoman Santa Cruz. And please, especially if you're in District 1, please come out if you can to, to voice your grievances, meet your council member, and see what is going on in the city. So this is something that I think is very important. Of course, I'm gonna be there, hopefully. Nothing happens to me while I'm there. So please come out, and that's gonna be Thursday, March 9, 2023 at 11. So, which is kind of weird because most people are at work. But anyway, but we'll get it out there. Some of the things I want to talk about also, too, is the City App. Now, when the snow started falling, I started getting a few calls from my neighbors and stuff about issues that had to do with the, you know, oh, they're panicking this, or maybe this is over that. People, please, download on the app, on the Play area iPhone or the City of Moreno Valley, and you will see the app there. And everything you need in regards to support from the city is there. If you want to report something anonymously, you can do it there. Trust me, I do it. I do it very well. So. And also, while I was in the DR, I want to say that I was watching a lot of the council meetings and planning, the planning meetings via YouTube, via the internet. So there's all kinds of reasons if you are a citizen of this city. And I know you guys are commuting and making that good money, oh God, that good money, but you can still be engaged with the city and what's going on and how, you know, we're doing things over here. There's a lot of projects going on behind the scenes that I think a lot of people would be interested to know. Staff doesn't get enough credit for bringing those projects to, to the City of Moreno Valley. And last but not least, I want to give a special shout out. We always talk about our law enforcement, which is great. Our law enforcement's great, but we never really talk about our future law enforcement with the explorers and the sergeant, whoever runs the explorers. You guys do a great job, and let's give them a round of applause because these guys come here and, and watch our foolishness as we do what we're supposed to be doing. And Mayor, again, it's a new regime. It's a new thing. So far, what you guys are doing is great. Councilman Bernard, all the new staff, again, you're doing great. You've got great counsel up there. You've got great advisors. Continue to use those and move the city forward.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Michelle Davis, Stephen Figueroa, and Luis Palomeros.
Good evening, all. Good evening, Mayor, and the staff and the rest of the joining committee. As you all know, it's been a long time coming. You know, when I came out here to Moreno Valley, I came with my foot on the ground, my feet to the ground, you know, knocking down doors, never giving up, persevering, doing everything that I needed to do in order to bring this, my program, A Better You, T T A G, stands for terrific teams, terrific teams achieving greatness. And with the help of the building and safety and the planning committee, I was able, like I said, to make sure that I was able to get my certificate of occupancy, and everything from there just started to flourish. I ended up joining the Chamber of Commerce, so I was able to go and be welcomed in and aboard. So I just want to invite everybody that could to come out to the ribbon cutting as a mentoring, intervention, and prevention youth program. And I would like to invite all that can, can come out on March the 15th at 11:30. I know it'll be everybody's lunch break, and believe me, I have great food, not snacks. I have a person coming out from Sacramento, one of my daughters, that's a traveling chef, that's gonna cater the event. Make sure you bring your raffles, because I'll be, and your business cards, because I'll be raffling off beautiful gifts to people that bring their business cards, as well as the Unified School District. I'll make sure that, you know, I pull from different schools to make sure they get three free enrollments for children that will come and be a part of that, as well as bring your cash for the fundraiser, because I'll have beautiful gifts for those that does that as well. I do have a flyer, so you know, if anyone is interested in coming and seeing the vision that God has given me to come and bring this great program to this community, I'm all open for the support, the love, and the volunteers that someone would love to pour in to youth, and not only youth, but to parents like the young lady there that is dealing with homelessness. And, you know, just sometimes I've been there, and I had a baby, and I step in a car at the age of 16, and you know, it's just sometimes you gotta leave outside of your region in order to get those services until they do come into the community. And I know that you all are working hard and diligently to make sure that you guys do are in a position to provide those services. But I do know, based upon your age, some people in Los Angeles that would be willing to help you. So God bless, and I look forward to seeing you all there.
The next three speakers are Stephen Figueroa, Luis Palomeros, and Bob Palomeros.
Good afternoon. Steve Figueroa with the Inland Power Latino Coalition. I come, I heard somebody earlier speak on Peppis Towing. That's one of the reasons I'm here. If you don't have a copy of the litigation, you should get it. And there are predatory practices toward Latinos and African-Americans that is occurring. This business practice is now being investigated by the state attorney general, was off. And if you have a contract with them, you need to investigate if they're doing it in your community. And this should be made public for your, your citizens and your voters here to see if their car is being illegally towed, including having spotters there, which is illegal, to see, to see if somebody's illegally parked when they're not illegally parked, when law enforcement hasn't even called, or the management hasn't called to have the car tow away, to unilaterally tow the vehicles. Now, who are these people? I have, you know, got the lawsuit. They have a list of names and people. Something you really need to look at to make sure they're not doing in your city. Why? I'm an advocate, like Victoria Baca West for Children with Disabilities. So these cars belong to families with children with disabilities, to people on unemployment, to homeless. This means somebody couldn't get to work to pay their taxes. Somebody didn't have a place to sleep that night because of their practices and the millions of dollars they're taking out of our community. And you know what? Even when they do it legit, they don't put nothing back in our communities. They don't donate to the local charities. They're getting filthy rich. I know the same thing. They're investigating in Cucamonga for the same practices and other areas. So we're going around to all the cities in the IE to say, hey, are you a victim? You need to look at this litigation. But you need to be progressive and reactive in protecting the, those who have a vehicle, those people of color. The, he seems the target. You know, I know the guy. He likes to play like victim, like, oh, I'm, I'm the victim of civil rights. I sued the San Bernardino City. He's a businessman with a sophisticated lawyer that likes to sue cities. That's the bottom line. You know, look at the litigation. But if you look at this right here, you need to protect your city. If you have a contract with them, you need to sever it just based on this investigation and what it has in it. Protect your city. You have a duty to do that. Thank you very much.
Next two speakers are Luis Palomeros, followed by Bob Palomeros.
Are the public speakers here?
Yes, Mayor.
Luis Palomeros, community activist. Yes, I'm here today because there's a lot of issues going on in our city. I hope we're not gonna have another five-hour meeting. Wow. We've been having some long meetings, and you know, everybody's gotta go home. Everybody's got a job. I know you don't, Cabrera. Your job is always on a campaign trail. It never ends. I looked, I heard the town, Town Hall. It was all scripted, all scripted, even the questions. One guy asked you a question, and you kind of stumbled because I guess he got in there some way in the call. Now, I think you were supposed to be at the Arts Commission or the Arts. You weren't there. Come on. And Mark is here again. He was supposed to be at a meeting yesterday, the what? Let me see, the J, one of the meetings. He's not even going. These are the people you put in there. Today, you're gonna appoint and put people on the commissions and on the boards and all that? I hope these people are gonna show up. I hope they're gonna show up. This is your choices, your choices. The mayor that's on the job, mayor training here. You know, you got a whole entourage. When you go out there on your campaign trail, you haven't started campaigning yet. You know, you take staff. I mean, this, we need them here. We gotta take care of the hard stuff, not on a campaign trail that's never ended yet. Golly, that was November. Aren't we done there? Come on. You're everywhere. You're here, there, everywhere. Come on. What are you doing here in the city? You're always on a campaign trail. Get over it, you won. I know you're starting for the next year. I guess you're starting early, but come on. Let the staff, the staff has to do work. We got a lot of projects coming over the horizons. We got a lot of things coming over. We got projects that gotta come in. What are they doing when you have them on a campaign trail? I mean, that's our tax dollars. That's our money. That's our money. Come on. I know you're learning as you go along here, but oh, wow. And another thing, as far as shutting me up, if I'm here talking about anybody, family or whoever, I remember one time Mayor Gutierrez, I mean, yeah, Mayor Gutierrez, your family was out there harassing me, so I brought it up, and you panicked, and you said, oh, Mayor, you know, like shut me down. He said, let's not go there. Let's not talk about family. But your family has harassed me from day one, and I'm gonna, you wanna walk me out? This is my First Amendment right. Where does it stop? Where does it stop? With your family? Last time I was walking back to my seat, and your father's going like this to me. People didn't see it, but I seen it. It's wrong. Can he hold himself to a higher standard? He's the mayor's son. He's the mayor's son. Can he hold himself to a higher standard? And like I said, your wife's approached me four different times, four different times. Teach him. Show him. This is my First Amendment right. Like I said, if you wanna walk me out, handcuff me, so be it. It's gonna cost the city money when I do a lawsuit.
Thank you.
The next two speakers are Bob Palomeros and Roy Blackard.
Good evening, Council. On the opinion section of the Press Enterprise, Freedom on the Decline in the Land of the Free. I wanted to, first of all, thank the two chiefs, tremendous job they always do. And I wonder how many people here in this council chamber are aware that there's an integrity unit out of the DA's office that watches Moreno Valley City Council. Just called, I forgot his name, but I've spoken with him. But anyway, I want to thank Ms. Bernard. When we had the last council meeting, when they were talking about the 9.1 acres that gentleman wants to turn into a parking lot, it got kind of confusing with so many people speaking about it. But Ms. Bernard in her closing comments, plain and simple and to the point. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Anyway, let's see if I can get this in. Cabrera, I'm wondering if you've completed your ethics classes? Or have you ever read about the First Amendment? The Constitution, what it allows and what, and what it doesn't allow? What it doesn't allow is child porn, defamation, threats, false advertisement, and fighting words. But yet you violated Luis's rights by threatening her because she was speaking about an individual that so happens to be related to you, that is sitting there as she's walking from the podium, and he's making taunting gestures, but you didn't see that. Perhaps we should put cameras to face the, so we can get the culprits. But we need to take care of this stuff because, you know, we don't need to be here talking about this crap. I don't enjoy it, but I'm gonna bring it up if you do it. You know, you can't even follow your own policy, the rules, and man, I mean, I hear Roy come up here and explain to you, and you still, you know, I know you're learning. You're young, you know, you're a young boy, you know, so you need to actually hold your father accountable, too, you know. When he says something, and you know, he's out of line, do it. That's all. It's, it's not hard to do. And I guess that's it. I'll, I'm gonna save the canine quarry for later. Thank you.
Next two speakers, Roy Blackard and Denise Green.
The only BS I need is beer and sunshine. Well, strike that. I came here, so we'll have to deal with the real BS. First off, I wanted to tell the mayor, thank you, Elise. From Elise, I want to give you some credit for when you come up here. You are giving everybody a chance to speak, giving them there a lot of time. We haven't afforded that in the past. That's a good change, positive change. And I want to prove to the world, I'm not really the mean guy everybody portrays me to be. If you want a preview, and we're gonna be dealing with the budgets and public safety and this big thing, I implore you to watch the public comments at the Riverside County Board of Supervisors meeting this morning and pay particular attention to what I said because it's gonna come up. This is the biggest contract city in the Riverside Sheriff's Department. They provide our police services. We should have, and when we're coming up with this public safety debate, and I know Sheriff Chad came out to Valverde when there was a deal, maybe he should come up here. Maybe we should talk about conversations I've had with him in the 14 and 18 campaigns and stuff and get it all out there. Because it came out this week. LA cops agreed with me what I brought to this council in 2015 to save $35 million on a two-year budget, put more boots officers on the ground, put more public safety, put a safer community in Moreno Valley. And as I said at that, and I want him to deny it, Mayor X at the time said, I'm not gonna do it, after he was agreeing to it because RSA was Riverside Sheriff's Association was going to recall him. So what So what we need is an honest discussion of what's going on. People want to know, people don't know what the nuts and bolts of this and why things are going haywire, but they have to deal with it every day. That's what needs to change. I don't bring this out to say, to criticize what happened in the past. What I don't want to happen is repeat the mistakes of the past. That should be all of our goals. That should be all what we're striving for. People want things to work. They deserve things to work. That's the tide that lifts all boats. The dissension and the backbiting and the politics will send us deeper down into the BS I'm talking about. But if you really want beer and sunshine, then listen to what I'm saying and put it into action.
Final speaker is Denise Green.
Good evening, Council. I'm only here to speak on behalf of the working homeless community. Um, I am a homeless single mother out here in Moreno Valley. I'm, I grew up here. I'm sorry, I grew up here. And, um, I have just concerns about the programs you guys have for just single parents. I didn't weigh down my options for state, um, you know, them helping me, the shelters are full here. Um, the parking rides are dangerous. The one over here is crazy over there. I wouldn't park there. But I'm having a hard time finding housing and I'm working. I work a job, I'm in night school and it's just, it's really hard to find a place when, you know, the county gives me vouchers for 14 days and then they're like figure it out. But I have eviction under my name and I can't find anything. And it's a lot of people out here that works and they're homeless and they're in their cars and there's a guy in the parking ride over there by Home Depot. He's been sleeping in his car for two years straight. He's been stuck there. He's still there right now. And I just feel like if there were different avenues for funding for some type of housing for people like that at least have cars or are working or trying to get out of homelessness, there should be something for us. Cause I have a child and I don't, it's hard and even tonight I have to go to work tomorrow and I have no idea where we're going to sleep tonight. And that's a struggle for a lot of working people in the community. And I understand a lot of people choose to be homeless or whatever, but some of us are trying our best to not be homeless here. And I just, I just don't know, um, what steps we can take to just help people that wants help. Cause a lot of people want help, but some people don't. But some of us really want the help. And so I thank you guys for providing the stuff that you guys do provide from like the county and stuff like that, but it's not enough unfortunately. Need a little bit more for single moms out here. So that's all I have. Thank you.
That concludes public comments on items not on the agenda, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And thank you, Ms. Green, for coming as well. And, um, just want to briefly mention that, uh, we did have that study session, but, uh, I do plan on bringing an item back so that the council can take action, um, on one of our upcoming council meetings regarding homelessness in the city. So, uh, thank you for, for coming out here tonight as well. So that will conclude the public comment period for non-agenda items. Uh, that brings us to public comments on matters on the agenda. Uh, once again, if you wish to speak on any items on the consent calendar, you will have a total of three minutes to comment on those items. If you wish to comment on that or any other items, other than the public hearing calendar, you will have a total of three minutes to comment on each item at the time it is called up for consideration. But if we do have a large number of public speakers on a particular item, it may be necessary to reduce the amount of time per speaker, uh, to ensure that everyone has a chance to speak on all the items for the rest of the agenda as well. Uh, for public hearing items, each speaker will be provided with at least five minutes to provide testimony on each public hearing item. Once again, that's for public hearing items, it's a five-minute opportunity to speak. This actually brings us now to city council opening comments, if so desired. Would any council members like to make their reports and comments at this time? Seeing none, we're going to move to the joint cons, okay, Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
I just want to say that I am going to pull items from the consent calendar so that anybody who is speaking on matters on the agenda know that items are going to be pulled from the consent. Could we do that at this time rather than after public comments?
I was about to read this and then we're going to get to that part.
We're going to speak about what we're going to pull before?
Correct. Before we get to public comment, yes. So all items listed under the consent calendar, section A, B, C, D, and E are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council, community services district, or city successor agency, housing authority, decide to, uh, pull an item for separate vote or action. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. At this time, are there any items that the council would like to remove for separate action? Please hit your speaker button and we'll make sure to call on you. I see Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
I'd like to pull items A5, A6, and A7.
That's items A5, A6, and A7, pulling those. And would that be for question and comment or for anything in particular?
Question, comment, separate vote.
Question, comment, and separate vote for items A5, A6, and A7. Any other requests from council members? Seeing none. That brings us to city council questions of staff on consent items, excluding A5, A6, and A7. If there's any questions at this time, feel free to hit your speaker button. Seeing none. That brings us to public comments on consent items other than those that have been pulled. City clerk, are there any requests to speak on consent calendar items?
Uh, no, we don't. We have, uh, a few for, uh, A5, but we'll hear them later.
Okay. So no, no public speakers for all the other remaining items?
Correct, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us now to, um, entertain a motion at this time by the city council to approve the consent calendars.
A motion to approve?
I'll second Shaylinda's motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Shaylinda Bernard and a second from Mayor Protem Delgado. That passes 5-0. That brings us now to item F on the agenda, which is public hearing items. Questions or comments from the public on public hearing matters are limited to five minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Those wishing to speak can fill out a golden rod speaker slip to the sergeant-at-arms. Uh, so item F1, that is a public hearing for adoption of the proposed resolution for the full vacation for that portion of Gato del Sol Avenue at Virginia Street. And we have a report of public works, Mr. Michael Lloyd.
Actually, it'll be me, so. No problem. Uh, good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. So this item before you is a full vacation of Gato del Sol from Virginia Street to the west. Uh, this was requested by San Diego Gas and Electric Company for security reasons. The paper road is adjacent to their property. It is not used by the public, nor is it maintained by the city. On December 8th of 2022, the planning commission reviewed the vacation and found it conformed to the general plan and zoning regulations. The notice of intent to vacate was approved by city council in February 7th of this year. This vacation would abandon all city rights except for those reserved by EMWD at their requests for existing facilities. No existing surrounding parcels will be landlocked and all required notifications were conducted. This concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that report. That brings us to council questions of staff. If any, please hit your speaker button. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the hearing. City clerk, are there any requests to speak on this item?
There are no requests to speak, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Go ahead and close the hearing. That brings us to council deliberation, if desired. Seeing none, I entertain a motion by the council to approve staff's recommendations, numbers two and three.
Move to approve F1 and two.
I'll second.
A motion to approve by Councilmember Marquez and a second by Mayor Protem Delgado. That item passes 5-0. That brings us next to item G, which is items removed from consent calendar for discussion or separate action. And we had three items. I'll go ahead and start with the first one here, which is item A5. Item A5 is the mayoral appointments to various boards and commissions, and we have a report from our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we've got a slate, um, of appointments for the Arts Commission, Parks, Community Service and Trails Committee, the Library Commission, Senior Advisory Board, the Planning Commission, and Traffic Safety Committee. We had a couple of, um, well, we had like three, uh, council members that interviewed. It was offered to them. So the recommendations were made and this is the list that, um, we ended up with. That concludes staff reports. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, that'll bring us now to council questions of staff and then that'll bring us after to the public comment portion of item A5. Um, any council questions of staff at this time? Please hit your speaker button. And I do have just a couple of questions, um, for, for staff. Madam Clerk, you mentioned just now that there were three council members that conducted interviews. Is it possible to, to share with the public who, who or which council members conducted interviews with, with applicants?
Yeah, so under the Public Records Act, um, it is, um, information pertaining to applicants for certain commission appointments are deemed confidential. So just like to throw that out there. And that's actually to discourage, it's otherwise, um, according to some case law, the disclosure of those applicants' names who did not make the cut or did not get the appointment are, will, uh, will suffer embarrassment as, you know, if their names were disclosed and they didn't get the appointment. I mean, that's the reasoning that's been used by the Court of Appeal.
Yeah, thank you. Um, maybe just to kind of clarify a little bit, um, I definitely respect, uh, the privacy laws and everything. But I was just curious if we could know which members of the council, like I, I conducted interviews, but just which members of the council conducted interviews, not who, names of applicants or anything like that?
I got that lost in translation by the time it got to me, but that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, we, so we had the mayor conducted interviews. Uh, we had, uh, Councilmember Bernard, I believe, and Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz conducted interviews.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then the, have there been any other applications, um, since, since the agenda was posted? Have there been any other applications for boards and commissions that have come in?
No, there hasn't, Mayor. I checked this evening, we did mail one out, an application out, so, but we don't have any more at this point.
Understood. Thank you. Okay, that's all the questions that I have. So unless there's any other questions from the council, we'll go ahead and move on to the public comment portion of A5. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on A5?
Mayor, we're having some technical difficulties. Can we possibly take a quick break, about five minutes, so we can restart, uh, the boardroom?
Sure thing, okay. We'll go ahead and, uh, take a five-minute recess at this point. Uh, we'll be back in just about five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome back from our recess. We will pick up where we left off, and that was getting ready to call up our public speakers for this particular item. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
Yes, we have over ten speakers.
Over ten speakers, okay.
Closer to fifteen.
Okay. So seeing as there are a good number of public speakers on this particular item, it sounds like as of right now, just under fifteen, and it could possibly grow as it sometimes does. I'm going to, just out of respect for time and the other items that come after this, I'm going to ask that the time for public speakers for this particular item is reduced down to two minutes per speaker. Again, just to respect the other items that have to come up and everybody else as well. So we'll reduce that down to two minutes per speaker. Madam Clerk, would you like to go ahead and call the first three speakers, please?
Okay, I'll call three individuals at a time. Des Marie Guyton-Babs, and I'm sorry, I'm a little, what's his name? Carrie? Carrie Horvath and Erlin Gonzalez.
Good evening, City Councilmembers, staff, and those present in the council chambers. Again, my name is Des Marie Guyton-Bab, and I just wanted to say a few words about Erlin Gonzalez. Proverbs sixteen nine says, "In their hearts humans plan the course, but the Lord is the one that established the steps." This is why Erlin Gonzalez will be a great addition to the Planning Commission. As my supervisor and team member at the Housing Authority, he is a leader with an open-door policy. He leads by example, and he's not afraid to serve. There have been times when, working on a complex case, he dug into the trenches with me, assisting our clients in maintaining their housing. Erlin is a person who listens, motivates, and assists the public, our participants and landlords, to work cohesively in this current housing crisis. He demonstrates his twenty-plus years of service when the pandemic unknown to us entered our country in 2020, known as the coronavirus. When people were afraid to come into the office and work with the public, he showed up every day, leading our team at a most challenging time. In his career with the County of Riverside, he has worked with economic development, redevelopment, and affordable housing development. He continues to be a man of transparency, integrity, commitment, and it is an honor to share my experience of Erlin Gonzalez. And I'm sure, as you work with him and get to know him, your experience will be the same, if not better. Thank you for the time for allowing me to be a part of this planning meeting and to share my experience of my supervisor, colleague, and friend.
The next three speakers are Carrie Horvath, Erlin Gonzalez, and Sammy Luna.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, city staff, and the public. I'm also here for Erlin Gonzalez. I am a real estate broker, been licensed since 2004. I am the Director of Family Services at Habitat for Humanity, and I also had the pleasure of working with Erlin for eleven years at the County of Riverside. So my experience with Erlin, I'm here, you know, I'm not a political person. I'm here just to speak on behalf of his character and his work ethic. You know, he was a pleasure to work with. I learned so much. We worked on a few infill projects for single-family affordable housing, and I learned a lot about development, and I'm continuing to do development now. And, you know, I think that's why he's so perfect for the Planning Commission. And I am, you know, so, I admire him because he's such a family man, and, you know, Marino Valley, he made Marino Valley his home. And I think part of what's important about that is that, you know, he cares about the community where he's raising his family. And so to give him the opportunity to be able to serve his community, I think one of the things too about Erlin is, you know, we discuss all the time how it's important to hear all sides of the coin. You know, there's arguments for different points, and I think he's going to be, that would be something that he would be bringing to the Planning Commission, being able to look at the opportunities and how it might benefit his community. You know, he is here with his wife, and we were just talking about his kids. And, you know, I know that he's very passionate about his work. His kids have grown up, but I know from working with him, when you enjoy what you do, work kind of just rolls into your personal life. And he has been on soccer fields, still working and trying to-
Thank you, thank you.
The next three speakers are Erlin Gonzalez, Sammy Luna, and Tashia Hillard.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, City Council, and staff, and everyone watching on various social media platforms. I gotta be quick. My name is Erlin Gonzalez. I don't know if those that know me or don't know me, I want to give a brief intro of myself. I was born in Baldwin Park, California. I attended school out there. I came out to the region, to the Riverside region, when I got accepted to UCR, and I became part of the community. I became part of, through my work at the County of Riverside, I became a resident of the region. I met my wife, Almarice, who's in the audience, and a native of Marino Valley. We decided to establish our home in Marino Valley. I've been residing here since 2010. We have two children, Juan Pablo and Nicolas. They have been formed by Marino Valley and the close-knit community of the community. They've attended Ridge Chris Elementary and Montego Middle School. We're involved in their soccer leagues and faith-based community at St. Christopher Catholic Church. I was on the Planning Commission for two years, and it was an honor to be there. I reviewed a number of the projects that, from commercial, industrial, residential, and they all added value to Marino Valley. During that time, I decided to pursue an education, and I obtained my MBA in 2018. I know I possess the qualifications to be a Planning Commissioner. As a Planning Commissioner, you got to look at the merits of the project. And also, I want to just describe public service. I know many of the council members, through education, law enforcement, social work, can attest that it's important to serve your community. Again, thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to serving on the Planning Commission. If you have any questions of me, I'll be in the audience. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Sammy Luna, Tashia Hillard, and Evangeline Wise.
Good evening, honorable mayors, city councils, city staff, residents of Marino Valley. My name is Sammy Luna. I am a resident of District Two, and it's an honor to be here tonight to advocate for being a member of the Parks, Community Services, and Trails Committee. Being a public servant is actually a passion of mine. I actually, my employer is the City of Riverside Public Utilities. I've been there for nineteen years. I'm very familiar with how the city works, and it would mean a lot to be a part of our community in the decision-making and the things that happen here. I've raised my children here. They've attended Marino Valley Unified. I'm a homeowner and would love to be a part of this committee. Parks and Community Services and Trails have a significant impact on all of our residents. And as a member of this committee, I assure you that in my decision-making, I am thoughtful about every single person that is impacted by my decisions. I'm committed, I am dedicated, I am loyal, I will show up. I heard someone talking about people not showing up. I will definitely be showing up because I know how important it is to be a part of the process. It would be a great honor to serve my community of Marino Valley, and I appreciate your support and your consideration.
The next three speakers are Tashia Hillard, Evangeline Wise, and Leslie Bartholomew.
Hi, excuse me. Good evening, Mayor Cabrera and City Council. I first want to say thank you for the interview. I know we had a phone interview, and I also exchanged some emails with you, Councilwoman Sherlinda Bernard. And so I just want to say that, or introduce myself, excuse me. Dr. Hillard, I am a two-year resident of Marino Valley, so I'm brand-new. However, I do have a background in education. I'm a department chair at West Coast University, and I'm also a practicing chiropractor. I'm very passionate about education, and I'm interested in, I see that I'm a candidate for the Library Commission, and so I'm really excited about that. One thing I just want to also add, I'm sorry, I always get nervous sometimes speaking, so just bear with me. I'm also a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the Eta Nu Omega chapter, and we service actually Riverside and San Bernardino County. So we do a lot of community service work as well. One thing about me is like I like to get my hands in work, so I'm very excited about this position. One thing I just want to leave you all with, in honor of Women's History Month, I would like to leave you with a few words from Coretta Scott King. "The greatness of a community is the most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." And so with closing, I would just like to say that I look forward to working with this community, and so we can continue to do great work. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Evangeline Wise, Leslie Bartholomew, and Stephen Figaro.
Should I wait for the timer? Hello, Mayor Cabrera, board members. My name's Evangeline Wise, Eva for short. I wanted to come in and introduce myself. I have applied for the Arts Commission, and the reason I applied for that is because I have just had so much fun attending all the events. My daughter has Down Syndrome. She's twenty-two years old. I'm a military widow, and we've lived here since 1999, and we just have a blast. We have a blast. We go to all the events, all the music, Cinco de Mayo at Christmas, you know, you name it, we're there. And then I noticed that you had, you know, you were looking for members, and that's why I applied for the Arts Commission, because I have so much fun watching and seeing everything you guys put into all the events, and all the staff, all the kids that are working hard, all the free items that you guys give out, the food, and I want to be a part of that. Back years ago, when my daughter was thirteen, she's twenty-five now, I would also like to bring this back, is the Marino Valley singing competition. She won that competition when she was thirteen, and she was going to school here, and she wanted this gigantic $500 check. She's a singer now professionally. I think Marino Valley gives a lot to kids, and I'd like to see more of the children performing. You know, there are so many out there. There are so many music schools, performing arts schools here in Marino Valley. Anyway, I interviewed with our mayor a few days ago, and we had a nice little chat, and I wanted to thank you for getting back.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wise.
The next three speakers are Leslie Bartholomew, Stephen Figaroa, and Mark Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight to talk about James Baker, Commissioner Baker. I love Marino Valley. I chose to buy my house here. I've lived here for a long time, and I think Marino Valley gets it right. Commissioner Baker got it right for a long time. He's an outstanding person that does what he says he's going to do and stands by his word. He's a great addition to our community. He's done many wonderful things. Who makes floats? I mean, he's just, he's done many wonderful things in programs feeding children. He illuminated our M sign, and I love Marino Valley. He would be a great addition, and we'd love to see him back. Thank you.
Next three speakers, Stephen Figaroa, Mark Johnson, and Daryl Terrell.
Hi, thank you. First, I'd like to thank Elena Baca for the wisdom of pulling the item to have speakers, and so the public could hear. Hate rubber stamping, it always gets me. So thank you very much. Second, you guys are really blessed to have these candidates. They're enthusiastic, and they love what they do. I mean, this is really good. In some cities, there's so much inviting, even for a little small appointment, you're going, wow. But I'm here for James Baker to tell you, because I'm an advocate for children. And he has been there when I have advocated for children and- children. And he has been there when I have advocated for children and stood with me at the school districts, in parks, and different functions that we put on. And that's what you want. You just heard that one of the speakers talk about how the kids benefit everything you do. You need somebody that's involved, that love what they do. And, you know, outside of his position, so there's no conflict of interest or anything, he's prayed with me, he's visited me in the hospital, and I'm doing, that's the type of guy he is, you know. So, you know, I'm gonna not take the two minutes, but just saying, you guys are blessed to have everyone that's coming up here, and I'm sure, it sounds like they really value the trust that you're putting in them, and they hold that trust sacred to the public trust. Thank you.
Next three speakers are Mark Johnson, Daryl Terrill, and Alma Ruiz.
Hi, good evening, Major Cabrera, Major Protem Delgado, members of the council. James Baker asked, my name's Mark Johnson, James Baker asked if I'd come down and speak for him. Now, I'll say one thing, I'm a Superior Court Judge. I'm not allowed to endorse anybody officially, but I think it's fair game for me to talk about James's character. He's a personal friend of mine. I've got to know him because he roped me into riding on your float, the one that won an award. I've learned that that M is his work. But, you know, a lot of things, James also does a lot of work even over in the Philippines. I know he supports a charity. He does a lot there with his money. And I just have found him to be a really selfless individual, and I know he absolutely loves Moreno Valley. He's entirely devoted to your city, and I would just say I think he'd be an excellent choice. And appreciate what you folks do. I think, I've been to a lot of city council meetings. It is one thankless job, I can tell you. So I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you, folks.
Next three speakers are Daryl Terrill, Alma Ruiz, and Donovan Siddique.
My name is Daryl Terrill. I've lived here in Moreno Valley for thirty-five years. I wasn't born here in California. I was born in Atlanta, Georgia. I've been blessed and grateful to have called Moreno Valley home for the last thirty-five years. I'm a graduate of RCC. I got an AA in the ES. I'm a graduate of UCR where I received a bachelor's arts degree in political science. You know, after graduation from UCR, I told my mom that I was gonna make a difference in this community. And that's what I've done for the last thirty-five years. I've walked, I've been on the Traffic Safety Committee before. I served in the first class of Moreno Valley, the leadership Moreno Valley. I've served on the Parks and Recs Citizens Ad-Hoc Budget Committee. I've attended council meetings for, I don't know, almost like thirty years, I think. I've walked picket lines with my brothers and sisters who were fighting for fair wages and the fair pay for, in Beverly Hills to Anaheim. I currently serve on the Riverside County Behavioral Health Commission for the last nine years, where I fought for this community to get our fair share of resources when it came to our crisis management team that responds to mental health crisis and substance abuse and homelessness. I stood up for this community. I've given my heart and love. No one paid me to do this kind of stuff. It's because it's in my heart to make a difference. I was, I'm so proud, again, to be part of this community, and proud that I was able to serve in some capacity. But I thank you if you consider me. I really appreciate it, but thanks.
The next three speakers are Alma Ruiz, Donovan Siddique, and Fred Plumley.
Good evening, Mayor Cabrera and council members. My name is Alma Ruiz, and I have lived in Moreno Valley since 1983 when I was born. As a lifelong member of this community, I truly believe that having qualified members from this community to serve in leadership roles is of the utmost importance. I am here to express my support for Mayor Cabrera's nomination of Erlan Gonzalez to the Planning Commission. Erlan Gonzalez is my husband. I can attest that Erlan is capable of serving as a planning commissioner, as he has served as an alternate planning commissioner in the past. Erlan has the education and the experience to serve the city of Moreno Valley in this role. Erlan has been part of this community for the past almost fifteen years. I believe that it is important to nominate citizens that plan to stay in this community to serve roles in leadership that will be making decisions on the future of the city. My father, Romelio Ruiz, chose Moreno Valley to start his family when he came from Mexico. Erlan and I chose to raise our sons in the city of Moreno Valley, and we hope that both of our boys, Juan Pablo and Nico, choose to raise their families in this beautiful city. People like Erlan are a great asset to commissions like the Planning Commission, because he loves this city, is vested in this community, and is highly qualified. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Donovan Siddique, Fred Plumley, and Roy Blackard.
All right, welcome back, welcome back, welcome back. I was told by the commish if I could say a few words in his stead as he's going through this thing now. When I, when somebody asks me for endorsement, I always say, I don't know if that's a good thing. If you want my endorsement, it might backfire on you, but whatever it is, please don't hold that against them as he goes. I just want to say a few things about the commish. You know, we all know his advocacy in the city. He does a really good job out here, and I'm one of the main people that will say that it's hard to get volunteers with what's going on in the world today in regards to, you know, participating. It's very, very hard. One thing about the commissioner is, he will go out, and every year, he's called me to go help him on that float, and I'm like, nah, I'm busy. I got stuff to do, whatever the deal is. So we need, you know, commissioners that not only think inside the box and use the resources that they have, but they have the knowledge to go outside and say, hey, I know this person in the community. I can ask this person for help. I can ask that person for help, knowing they're gonna get it, because he does have some stuff behind the scenes. So, and also Daryl Terrill. Here's a guy who's been in the community for a very, very long time, and, you know, he's, tonight, he's put something in the public record that we, you know, have used in the past. I mean, several records that go way back. And these are the type of people that we should be honored to have serve the city, you know, because they constantly want to do it. And, you know, again, these people have, at least the two people I'm talking about have been vetted, and we have other people that are, want to participate. And we should get these people to participate to bring other people to participate, because I'm gonna tell you, as you guys know, when people don't see it, and they don't see other people participating, they don't do it. So, I mean, thank you guys that are volunteering, because Moreno Valley is a great city. And again, please don't hold my endorsement of them against them.
The next three speakers are Fred Plumley, Roy Blackard, and Louise Palameras.
Good evening, honorable mayor, honorable mayor, protem, city council, city staff, and all of you. And my name is Fred Plumley. I'm a citizen here in Moreno Valley. I was asked by James Baker to endorse him, and I'm really happy to do that. He's been a friend of mine since about 2008. And when I met him, I was chief officer from Moreno Valley Racies, and I met him, and he was really colorful, and he was out. And I have two children, and I want to say, all the years he was Parks and Recreation Commissioner before, every time I went to an event, he was there. He was meeting people. He was helping people. And it's what he's about, you know. He always says, let's not just talk about it, let's do something. And that's what he's been doing all his life, you know, serving people, doing all these different events. You know, he came up with this idea to fix the M and did all that work on that. He also, you know, has been doing award-winning floats for the city for seven years, and he got me to help too, and then also do floats for the radio station. So we've been doing it. You know, later after that, when he wasn't Parks and Recreation Commissioner, he decided it was important to provide food for young people, deserving young people in the Philippines. And he did that, organized it, and actually this year fed about 4,000 people. Also, he's been on my show on the radio for many times, probably more than anyone else other than Jesus Holguin. So, by the way, I want to also recommend Sammy Luna. Sammy Luna's great too. I didn't know she was endorsed here, but I want to endorse Sammy Luna as well as James Baker. They're both gonna do a great job. So I know James Baker's gonna do phenomenal. Take it to the bank, okay?
Next three speakers, Roy Blackard, Louise Palameras, and Christopher Baca.
One thing you will never hear is a judge endorsing anything I ever did. I'm usually on the wrong end of that gavel. But, but as, you know, Baker, that's a no-brainer. I mean, maybe he didn't build the M, but you probably wouldn't have it if it wasn't for him and all this stuff like that. And all the rest of candidates seemed fine, but what I wanted, what really concerned me is when the agenda came out, I noticed by Daryl's name, it was denied. I called him up, and I found out he actually applied for the Planning Commission. What I want to know is why we're not using the system that the great Mayor Tom Owings came up with and put the interviews out for the Planning Commission out in front of public where all the, everyone could ask the questions. Everyone made that. The Planning Commission is our most important division. They're actually a decision-making body. We should have open hearings on who's gonna be on that. The public should be allowed to comment like that. And, again, I have nothing, Erlan's a great guy. And if the council decides Erlan's back on, fine and dandy. But I want to know why Daryl or others weren't considered. I mean, we put open processes in before, so, I mean, maybe the laws have changed on that, but I don't really believe so. But anyway, we can work that out. But again, that's where we had, you know, putting Joanne and Ray Baker on and off, and Erlan on and off. That is exactly why Moreno Valley is viewed as a circus clown show across the deal. And why development doesn't come in here? Because we play these yo-yo games. Let's straighten it out. Let's fix it. Let's put the Planning Commission back on the agenda. Let's do it right and get it done so we can have a better city.
Next three speakers, Louise Palameras, Christopher Baca, and Hazel Lambert.
Wow. Louise Palameras, community activist. There's a lot of good choices here today. It's great. I know a lot of these people that have been in the trenches, helping, doing all of this. James Baker for one of them, also a few others, and it's all good. So my concern is here, where's the representation for District One? We don't got nobody on the Planning Commission for District One. How many do we got on the east end over there? That's my concern. That's my concern. I know Mr. Gonzalez was on the Planning Commission as a, I believe, as an alternate, alternate, way back when in the day. Okay, I know that Marcus, that's his, they know each other. They go all the way back to George Price days, you know. So I just hope, I hope that Marcus and Cabrera don't use the guy, because he's really a great guy. He really is. But I think you got your agendas, and the way you want to plan things about the city to go forward, kind of makes me wonder. But it's a great family. I know them, and let's see what happens here today. But again, Daryl Terrill had put in, and you changed it up three different times. He was on the, interviewed for the Planning Commission, and then you took it off the agenda and changed it. What happened? I believe, I could be wrong. Correct me if I am. Okay, I got that from somebody then. Maybe it was in a source that, okay. So anyway, nevertheless, we don't have no representation in District One. When's that gonna happen? When are we gonna do that? Everybody on this council should have representation. I'm sorry, I'm getting stuck here. Thank you, in each district. How many do we have in District Three? I know we don't have a council member. We got a missing council member half the time. Thank you.
Next speaker, Christopher Baca and Hazel Lambert.
Good evening. I'm here representing myself, and my opinions are my personal opinions, and I'm not trying to encourage anybody. Anyhow, in case anybody didn't know, our street that comes into our civic center is named Rogelio Ruiz, which is Mrs. Alma Ruiz's father, who's married to Mr. Elian Gonzalez. And, you know, he's been around in the city for, you know, so he knows what's going on. Mr. Baker, I've volunteered so much with him on the M and the float. And Daryl Terrill, of course, I think he should, you know, also be considered for maybe alternates on the Planning Commission. I think you should go back to the alternates. There should never be a person that's missing from the Planning Commission. Sometimes, I believe, at times, there were no quorums, and that's, you know, that's ridiculous because of the city, the people. But anyhow, I also have a concern with this slate, and I would ask that you pull those three names and approve those three people, Mr. Baker, Mr. Gonzalez, and Mr. Terrill, and revamp the rest of the people. And I think every single individual on this seat should vet every single person, okay? So I think it really should be pulled, and, but because it's really necessary to get the Planning Commission and Mr. Terrill and Mr. Baker on there, I think they should be approved immediately. But I have a concern with the diversity. For instance, were there no other males on the Arts Commission? All I see is females here. That's discriminatory. I don't, I have nothing against any of the individuals on here. I don't know them, other than the ones I've mentioned, and I'm sure they're great people if they've applied for this. Thank you.
Final speaker is Hazel Lambert.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hazel Lambert. I've been a resident of Moreno Valley for over thirty-five years. I served as a certified long-term care ombudsman, where I went into the skilled nursing facilities, and we advocated for the residents and checked out any elder abuse. I was the director for the ombudsman program for San Bernardino and also for Riverside County. I'm currently the cultural community liaison for Riverside Behavioral Health, where we're working to eliminate stigmas and barriers related to mental health services. And I'm also very supportive and advocating for our seniors, because I noticed during Christmas, oftentimes, we're thinking about the children, but nobody's thinking about our seniors. So I'm making a point to make sure that I worked with the different organizations that we remember our seniors during the holidays in the skilled nursing facilities. And for those of you, if you haven't had a chance to go to the Civil Rights Institute, because I've been a long-term resident of Moreno Valley, I had an opportunity to do a recording for the Civil Rights Institute to talk about Moreno Valley and the work that we've done here. And I look forward to hopefully being a part of the senior advisory board. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on A5.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to all of our public speakers as well. So that will conclude the public testimony part of that item. And that will bring us now to council deliberation for council comments. If you'd like to speak, please go ahead and hit your speaker button here on the screen, and we'll call on you one by one. First on the list here, we have Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Thank you, everybody who came up and spoke and support, those who came to speak on their own behalf. But my concern tonight is representation across the city. The city is broken up into four districts. Currently, our commissions have forty-six commissioners. Of those forty-six commissioners, only three are from District One. The slate presented to us tonight has twelve nominations. Only one of those is from District One. We can't continue to put most of the commissioners from everywhere else but District One. Planning Commission has seven commissioners. Currently, there's two from District Two, two from District Three, and two from District Four. It's obvious we need somebody from District One. The Traffic Safety Committee has one member from District One, three from District Two, none from District Three, and two from District Four. The senior advisory has no members from District One, three from District Two, two from District Three, and three from District Four. Yet, the nominees are from Districts Two and Four. The only one who would be balanced from the nominations tonight The only one who would be balanced from the nominations tonight are the nominees for Parks, Community Service, and Trails. Currently, there are two from District Two, two from District Three, and only one from District Two and Four. Those nominated tonight are from District Four and Two. This would even out the Parks and Commission. If this has to come as a slate and we are only allowed to either approve or disprove the entire slate, I say we disprove it. We pull the item, go out and find representation from our districts. Had we been, had the mayor's duties presented to us last month as we, as the council had voted and asked for, these types of activities would be pushed down to the council members. We would be responsible. I, as the representative for District One, would be charged with finding commissioners to fill these vacancies, and I'm willing to do that. But at this time, the only way to do this is for the mayor to bring a slate and us either to approve or disprove it. So at this moment, the way the slate is presented, as an all or none, I say none.
Next, we have Mayor Protem Delgado.
That was some great research my colleague just presented to us. But I did review all of the packets that were submitted and in saying, somebody said, I think it was Steven Figueroa or Chris Baca, I don't know who it was, but they said that there's some excellent, excellent choices in our city, and I agree. On paper, fantastic. But I have to agree with Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz that it is absolutely not balanced. One would say, so the person receiving these nominations, the person receiving these applications would say, "Well, I didn't get any from, from District One," or "I only got a couple from District One." But what my colleague is saying is, allow her, allow us time, let me go get that representation, then get, submit the applications, vet them, and then make a decision. If she is not successful in grabbing those, those folks that, that don't want to do it or grabbing some folks that do, it still gets vetted up here. So I, I have to agree with Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz that there is, remember, guys, there's four councils and a mayor, four count, four, four districts and a mayor. They all need to be represented equally or as equal as possible with the number of commissioners on each committee. So I have to agree with my colleague.
Next, we have Councilmember David Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have great people out there. And on this list, there's a lot of great people on this list. For the past several years, we have not met quorum in a lot of committees. Why? It's been publicized. People out there could read. If they don't want to be on a committee, they don't, you're not gonna get them on the committee. Simple as that. So we're gonna deny that these individuals that want to help the city grow because we don't have equal representation out there? There's opportunities out there. Been published, I'm telling you, I've seen it. I've been on the council seven years. We have a chance to grow and these people here can help us grow. I say, you know, let's put our personal differences aside and let's, let's get to work. These people want to contribute to our city and they're all good people. I know quite a bit of them on here. So I, you know, I'm ready for the slate to get approved and let's get the city going forward. If there's openings in the future, there always will be. Residents from District One could apply, but you don't have them. People don't not want to serve the city in those capacities. Are we gonna jeopardize losing all these individuals? I hope not. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilmember Bernard.
I would like to thank everybody that came out and spoke tonight. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz for coming with the research of representation. And so I will just say, this, this is, this is a difficult one because we have talked about things being different up here. We've talked about equity. We've talked about distribution. One of the first things that I, I am going to tell you, I personally asked, "Hey, I see all these, I see all of these people applying. I need to know who's on what, what boards and commissions and what districts are represented." And when I get to Planning Commission, my thing is District One has zero representation, none. But yet they're making decisions at that level for that area and there's nobody on there that has a voice. I can't speak for what was happening prior because I wasn't on the city council. I can tell you that we've had plenty of discussions, including Mayor Cabrera, about him wanting things to be different, the way things were operating, and that he wanted equity to come forward. He also understood that the way this slate was presented, it was gonna be an all or nothing, and we have mayor's duties discussions next week. We've presented several different ways that we thought that we could go forward doing these things and we were unable to get it on the agenda and handled last month so that we wouldn't be in this predicament. So to say that, well, people from District One aren't applying, maybe they don't know one and two, allowing us to go out and find people to apply for these positions, because if we can't give you a list, because the truth is, we don't have a say-so in this list. The council members up here do not have a say-so to make a recommendation. We don't have a say-so in who's selected. You know who has a say-so and who's selected? The mayor. So the mayor's the one that knows, okay, District One isn't represented, maybe I should go find someone out in District One. What we're asking for is to make sure that when we go down to sit at the table, that we have true equity and we say that, okay, District One needs a representative on this, we'll give her time to find a representative. If she can't within that short amount of time or whatever the time is, then the mayor can find someone to do it. What we've, what we've, what we've presented and what we've asked for when we were trying to go through the duties were things that would handle all of this. So this slate as it's presented, I cannot move forward with this entire slate. And that, that's the issue. It's an all or nothing. If we could pick and choose and say this one and that one, then we could and we would, but we can't. And I know people fall all in, on and off of commissions. I know that Planning Commission has always been a source of contention. And so I think that this council in general keeps trying to do things differently. And in order for that to happen, because there really is no harm in this slate not going forward tonight and moving to the next meeting or the meeting after we decide what we're gonna do with mayoral duties, because I do think there's a, a way to actually work together so that all the council members feel like they have a say-so and so that the mayor also has a member that he's selected that's a say-so moving forward. But this last minute of rushing it all through, I just, I, I cannot do it. And that's not to say that there are not people that I want on this, on these commissions that I would go for. There is nothing wrong with Mr. Gonzalez. But I do notice that District One has no representation on a commission that makes decisions about what happens in District One. And that, to me, is a problem. So for me, this isn't, this would be a no-go and it is nothing personal. Because even though my voice is shaking while talking about this, I would rather speak up in truth and then sit, instead of sitting here and lying and accepting it.
That now brings me to my deliberation, my comments on this one. Thank you to my colleagues for their comments on this particular item. And first, I just want to say thank you to all of the members of the public, especially all of the applicants who came out here tonight to show up here in person, to speak, to express their opinion, and also to everyone else who came out to speak in support of one applicant or another. Really, really appreciate you coming out, making the time to speak up and share your opinions and your perspectives. So first, I want to touch base on a couple of things that three of my colleagues up here have brought up. The main one, sounds like, has to do with representation from the various districts in the city of Moreno Valley. I think that that's definitely an important factor to consider, but I don't think it should be the deciding factor when deciding who's going to serve on a board and commission. We should consider the merits. You've heard extensive comments about resumes for various applicants. Some have previously served on boards and commissions, some actually work in the, you know, various subject matter topics that they're currently being nominated to. So yes, I understand and hear the concerns about representation when it comes to council districts and trying to balance that out, but realistically, even if we, you know, do that, it's gonna be very difficult to perfectly balance those boards and commissions. It's gonna be nearly impossible to do that. Various terms are, are up at different times. A lot of people don't apply. I mean, this has been a problem for years where we have lack of quorum time and time again because there are not enough people showing up at these meetings and we can't conduct business. What kind of message are we sending to the community when in this council chamber, a couple of weeks ago, we unanimously approved the Public Art Initiative and the very next day, the Arts Commission had a meeting? And what happened? Only one commissioner out of three showed up, lack of quorum, no meeting. And there were at least 20 people that showed up from the community to participate. What kind of message are we sending to the community? That their voices don't matter? That applicants stepping up and being willing to participate in our city at a higher level don't matter? I completely disagree with that approach. And you've heard from basically all of the, the folks that have come out here to speak about the merits and the resumes and the track records and so many other things of various applicants, they've, they've spoken. And I think it's a disservice to, this is my first time making nominations, it's part of, part of our process, and we're gonna say, say to all of the applicants, "Oh, we, we, we like your resume, we like your application, we like who you are, it's not personal, but we're still gonna tell you that you're, you can't serve on our boards and commissions." We're sending the wrong message and I, I don't think we need to do that. I also want to address Roy Blackard, you brought up a question, brought up something about, on some of the applications, some of these appointments are appointments to maybe something that they didn't put on their application. Some of the applicants did not put a second option. There's a, two lines on their first option and then second option, right? Some of the applicants only put one option. So I actually interviewed every single applicant, every single one. And I know that two of my colleagues up here conducted interviews as well. I'm not sure who they interviewed and we won't go into that, but I can only speak for myself. I interviewed every single applicant and I asked every single applicant, "If you can't get on your first option, what are your second and third options?" Because there's only a limited number of vacancies, there's a limited number of seats to go around, and at sometimes, too many applicants apply and there aren't enough seats, so you have to pick and choose who you're going to nominate. And that's a tough decision to make. So I made sure to ask every single applicant, "What are your first, second, third, and some of them even fourth choices?" So that I know, okay, if it doesn't fit on this board and commission, then it might fit on this other one. So I made sure to vet that, that entire process. So I hope that answers your question there, Roy, as to why some are appointed or nominated when it wasn't mentioned on some of the applications. So the city has been doing outreach for at least two months straight of social media outreach, press releases, community events, spreading the word about the vacancies. We had the telephone town hall that went out to thousands of people in the city. We've been doing this for a long time now of trying to get folks to step up and apply, submit their applications, and get people to serve on these boards and commissions. So I respectfully disagree with you, Councilmember Bernard, when you say that we're rushing this because it is not. Staff has been working very hard to try to get folks to step up to the plate and this didn't just happen overnight. Weeks ago, a email was sent out from staff letting the entire council know that if you wanted to interview applicants, you had the, the opportunity to do that as well. This didn't just happen yesterday or last week. This process has been ongoing for a long time. So I completely disagree with any comments about rushing this process or anything. If anything, I made sure that we made this as open as possible and that the city did everything it could to do outreach and ask residents to apply. This could have been put on the agenda one month after the November election, but it wasn't. We put a lot of work into this, a lot of time into this. And my predecessor, I think it's important to mention this, that when I was just a council member, we council members were not given, we were not allowed, we were prohibited from interviewing applicants. Only the mayor was allowed to do that. I changed that. I took it upon myself to do that because I think every member of the council should have the opportunity to interview and meet with all of the applicants. So that was something that I didn't get the opportunity to do, but I have extended that opportunity to every member of the council and, and I know that they've taken that opportunity. I also think that, I, I just find it interesting with, you know, Mayor Protem, you've been on the city council for, for how long now?
A year and a few months.
A year and a few months. And Councilmember Santa Cruz, how long have you been on the city council now? Just under a year. So why didn't this come up in the past? Why is this not something that for past appointments to the boards and commissions or, this is only coming up now and it's being tied in now to, as Councilmember Bernard mentioned, the mayoral duties? So I think the timing of some of these concerns being brought up is something that I have questions about as well.
You want to answer?
Is that a rhetorical question?
So, well, we'll, we'll get to it. I have a few more comments, but if you like, we could come back and make sure to give you, if you'd like to respond to that. So I don't think we should say no to all the applicants. I don't think that we should postpone this, do a disservice to the community by doing that. Again, every council member has had the opportunity to interview. All of the applicants have passed their background checks. There is diversity in the applicants as well. The, someone brought up something about men and women and representation that, that had nothing to do with the selection process. That's just based on who applied and what boards and commissions they wanted to serve on. So we've heard the community speak. We've heard what they had to say about the applicants. And again, I mean, having served on the city council for five and a half years prior to now being mayor, there's just so many, so many times when meetings couldn't take place because of lack of quorum and it's so difficult to get people to volunteer for these boards and commissions. And now, we have a full slate. We can put a lot of hard-working residents onto these boards and commissions and I think we need to move forward with making these appointments here tonight. So with that, I'll finish up my, my comments here, but I just want to once again say thank you to everyone who was willing to step up. Thank you for coming out here to this meeting. I fully support this slate. I will vote yes to approve this slate and I'm asking all of my colleagues to also support the slate as well. So I'll conclude my comments with that and I do see a request to speak here from Mayor Protem Delgado.
So I, I want to be perfectly clear that everybody that, that did come up and talk tonight, this is, this has nothing to do with your qualifications, your character. I was actually impressed when I read your resume, or resumes, your, your applications, I was actually impressed on what we have moving forward with the city. So I will tell you guys and, and I hope you don't think that just because we want it a different way and we want a different process in which we choose, that it's a slight against you guys or your qualifications because you guys are actually very, very qualified. However, Mayor, you asked what changed. You, your whole goal was to change the way this council was run when you came up here. You said because when you were just a councilman, council member, you weren't allowed to do anything. You said that, that you weren't, you weren't allowed to do a lot of stuff.
Interview for...
Well, not, not only that.
And other things.
And other things. We are following your lead by changing the way that... We are following your lead by changing the way that things are being run up here. And by me saying that, your lead is not just this particular topic, but topics on a lot of different stuff. You said you want a change. You actually gave us the opportunity to review, to talk, to call, to email the applicants. So, we are actually following your lead by wanting change. And so, you said what's different now? Why now? And you find it curious that we want this process changed. Well, there's gonna be a lot of change and you're leading that change. You said, "We want change up here. We don't want it run like it used to be." And that's straight from you. You're leading that. So, in saying that, I do see qualified candidates. Doesn't mean that they're not gonna get back on here. Let's just postpone this slate. Let District One and any other district that wants to go out and find some applicants. And if they're not the best applicant, we will tell you. And we'll tell you through this process, the same vetting process. If she comes back with four people and absolutely not, and we all agree that they don't have any qualifications, she just found them over at the park, then... Then we'll know. So, I think that you have to put some trust in your council to be able to move this process forward. Again, you guys that are in the audience, you guys are staying late. It's eight o'clock and you guys are still here because you wanna find out what's going on. No slight against you whatsoever, zero. It's the process that we're concerned about. And if it doesn't work because she can't find the qualified applicants, it doesn't work. We allowed that process to take place. That's the answer when you said, "What has changed?"
Next, we have Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
I'm not sure how it was done behind closed doors, whether you were allowed to interview or not because, like Mayor Protem and Councilmember Bernard, we weren't up here, we didn't take part in that. But it's not gonna continue while we're up here. We're gonna have representation, we're gonna represent our residents, and it does matter where you live. Just like I can't run for District Three's seat because I live in District One. It matters. I've heard this before from someone, "It doesn't matter where you live." And he was wrong. It does matter. You have to live in the district and we should be represented by people who live and are impacted by the decisions. If only District Three is making decisions that impact the entire city, well, it's probably gonna be a little bit tilted towards their benefit. Whereas, if we all have representation, then we know that the residents are being represented. It does matter where you live because it affects... Geography affects your decision. It affects the impacts. The decisions that you're making impact where you live. That's why the residents must live in Marina Valley. Well, we need to be more stringent. We need to say that the residents must be equally represented throughout the city. And this is something that we asked to discuss during the mayor duties and you don't want to because you wanna do what you wanna do. Well, that's not gonna happen. This is a board where the majority rules. And what we're saying is, we want representation throughout the city. We want a chance to do work up here and we're not gonna fall in line. And I don't know why you allowed it to happen when you were just a council member, but we're letting you know right now, we're not gonna let it happen. So, it's not gonna happen that way. We're saying, "We want representation and we're gonna hold out until we are represented well."
Next, we have Councilmember Bernard.
So, earlier you talked about not having quorum and meetings not being able to be conducted. So, I'm looking at where we're appointing people. So, the Art Commission, I was there. I found out exactly why two of the members weren't there. They got their days messed up and one was stuck in traffic. So, I see the Art Commission, you're trying to make sure that doesn't happen. I am on the... I am part of the Parks, Community and Service and Trails Committee. They have a quorum. So, adding these two members doesn't mean their meetings are or not... It's gonna make their meetings happen. They already have a quorum there. The same for the Library Commission, they have a quorum. The same for the Senior Advisory, they have a quorum. And the same for Planning Commission. So, if your concern was us having meetings and not having representation because we didn't have a quorum, well, Utilities Commission doesn't have a quorum and I see no one is appointed to Utilities Commission. So, when we're talking about, "Well, I'm appointing people because we don't have quorums." Well, so is Utilities Commission not important? Because we have two people sitting on that committee that haven't had meetings in months. So, is Utilities Commission not important? One for us to consider when we're going through? And a lot of these boards already are heavy. They have people. I went to the Senior Advisory Board. So, that excuse, I politely disagree. That's an excuse. You were planning and choosing, trying to slip some of these in here, mixing with other ones because you knew what you were trying to do. So, I don't think that you can sit here and say you're worried about quorum when the truth is, you weren't worried about Utilities Commission quorum. Yeah, or environmental. Like, you weren't worried about those quorums when you could've built them in those quorums instead. So, if you wanna talk about quorum, keep it straight and say which ones actually have quorum and which ones do not. The Art Commission only didn't have quorum because those two members got confused. And we did have an unofficial meeting because we wanted to make sure that everybody was still heard. So, I understand what you're saying and yes, we got a lot of applicants. And I apologize to Ms. Evelyn Jeno White. I apologize. Because she has... I feel bad for her. Of this entire thing, she's the one person I feel bad for. She's been trying to get on the Arts Commission since, what are we? Yes. And she's came to every Arts Commission meeting, everyone. I feel bad for her because she's been coming and trying to get on and she hasn't been appointed. So, she's getting tossed up in all of this and it's not fair. But at the end of the day, I'd rather do it right, one time through, than to do it all messed up.
We do have another request to speak, but I want to... Actually, we'll go ahead and we'll move to Councilmember Marquez and then I'll come back.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow. This has been going on for how many years now, no quorum? If these people come up here and speak about it in the past several months or years, they had an opportunity like anybody else come up at this podium up here and speak. What's the difference between there and here? There's no difference. You got a voice. And I hear from any of them up here. But as soon as a new mayor was elected, wow, we gotta change everything. We're not gonna vote for this, we're not gonna vote for that. Well, I guarantee you... Excuse me, I'm speaking. So, they're gonna sit up here and criticize how this was done. Why didn't you criticize it when we had a previous mayor up here? Well, Roy Blackard was probably the only one. But yes, it's true. We weren't allowed to interview any applicants in the past. And I'll state my life on that. We were restricted and we were told we could not interview because the previous mayor didn't want it, us to interview him. But the majority, as one of the council members says, the majority is speaking. When are we gonna end this majority crap up here? Yeah. Exactly. It's BS. It's BS. Come on. This city wants to go forward. We got applicants here. Just because we got a new mayor, all of a sudden, ah, all this is being brought up. So, after tonight, you know what? I wouldn't blame these applicants if they don't wanna come back and apply again. But I hope they do. This is... Can't believe it, can't believe it. My colleagues up here wanna change it overnight. Everybody had an opportunity to speak up, not only in months, but in years. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to respond and ask one or two questions as well. I'll just, once again, remind folks that my colleagues here... I know Councilmember Bernard from District Four is very new, brand new to the city council, has been serving here for maybe three, four months now. But Mayor Protem and Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz, you've been serving on here for a short time now. Much longer than Councilmember Bernard. So, since you served here, you knew that one day there would be appointments to boards and commissions. So, that's part of your duty, representing your districts, to do that outreach, to ask residents to apply. So, this is where I wanna ask staff that, prior to the agenda being posted, how many applications actually came in? And of those applications that came in, how many of those were actually nominated and appointed to the boards and commissions? If staff could just share with us some numbers and let us know again, how many applications came in prior to the agenda being posted? And of those applicants and applications, how many were nominated and appointed to serve?
I don't have those figures before me, Mayor. It might be all of them. But I can't tell you for sure at this point.
Yeah, so, when I conducted the interviews, and I believe there may have been one other application that has been submitted after the agenda was posted. But every single person who applied was nominated. Every single applicant was nominated. Not one person was left off of that list. Everyone was given a fair shot and an opportunity. So, if there's questions about, "Why did you appoint some people and not others?", I don't think that's a valid argument because every single applicant was nominated. And every council member up here, including myself, had plenty of time, months if not years, to do outreach at your town hall meetings, when you're out in the community at the Esma Women's Club, to invite residents to apply. Why was that not done before? So, if that's the argument that you're going to make now, why residents from your own district are not stepping up and applying, then we're gonna hold you to that moving forward. That's a part of our duty, representing our districts, to ask our constituents to step up and serve. So, I just wanna make sure that everybody's aware, every single applicant that applied was nominated to serve on a board and commission. And so, just wanna make sure that that's clear. There's gonna be more opportunities in the future as well. If we approve this tonight, there's gonna be more opportunities in the future to make nominations and make appointments and make changes if that's what you desire. But like I said before, and Councilmember from District One is misstating my comments, I clearly said, and I'll repeat again, that I think balance and representation from various districts is important. Again, I said that. But it should not be the deciding factor in serving on a board and commission, what district you live in. There's people's merits, there's people's experience, education, their careers, how they volunteer in the community. There's a lot of other factors that I think matter much more. Appointing someone to the Planning Commission, for example. Planning Commission is responsible for land use decisions, zoning changes, conditional use permits, maps, land use decisions. And I think that the highest qualified person should serve on the Planning Commission who is well-versed in land use decisions and has that experience. The council district that they live in should be considered, but again, it shouldn't be a deciding factor. There's, I think, other things that should decide whether someone serves on a board or commission. So, applicants' merits matter, their experience matters, their education matters, and their willingness to serve matters. So, in terms of the quorums, that's something that Councilmember Bernard brought up. And you clarified that two members for the Arts Commission, sounds like they had some issues and they weren't able to make it to the meeting. I don't know exactly what happened there or what kept them from coming to the meeting. But just because there might be a quorum right now, I mean, that could happen again on any board or commission. There can be, someone gets sick, something happens, you know, unforeseen circumstances, and then we're right back to square one, lack of quorum. Even if we have people serving on those boards and commissions, things happen. Sometimes we miss these meetings. So, we need to make sure that we're filling these boards and commissions. Again, when we have residents who are stepping up to the plate and wanna serve, we need to fill those seats. And again, every single applicant was nominated. I didn't leave off not one person. Everybody was given the opportunity to serve. And this shouldn't be as contentious as it is. This should be a very simple decision. We should've already approved these nominations. So, on the same topic of quorums, Utilities Commission. And if I could ask staff for some help here. Of the applications that came in, and you may not have it in front of you, and so, just answer to the best of your ability if you can. You asked about the Utilities Commission, right? And there not being a quorum on the Utilities Commission. Did we have any applications come in where someone asked to serve on the Utilities Commission?
We had one application come in today for the Utilities Commission.
For the Utilities Commission.
Yes.
So, but before, we didn't have anyone apply for the Utilities Commission?
No.
Okay. And how many members currently serve? And how many seats are available on the Utilities Commission?
We have two current members, so we still don't have a quorum. And I think it's eight or nine vacancies left.
Okay, eight or nine. So, even if we appointed, which we couldn't, it's impossible because of the agenda was posted. But even if we appointed the person who applied today to the Utilities Commission, I think there still would not be a quorum, I believe. If there's eight or nine members, there might still be a lack of quorum, it sounds like.
Yes, Mayor.
And then for the Environmental and Historical Preservation Board, that, the last time that the Environmental and Historical Preservation Board had a meeting was in 2018, six years ago. And there currently are no people sitting on that board and commission. We received one application from Ms. Amy Luna to serve on the Environmental and Historical Preservation Board. But I felt, and again, this is why I asked every applicant what their second, third, and fourth options were because even if we appoint one person to the Environmental and Historical Preservation Board, lack of quorum, I think honestly that's quite disrespectful. We're gonna appoint someone and then they still can't do anything. They're gonna just show up to the meetings and they can't actually conduct business. So, with that being said, just once again, wanna reiterate my support for the slate. I think that we should vote to approve. Unfortunately, it sounds like there's three of my colleagues up here who are not willing to vote yes for this tonight. I wish it were different. I hope one of you will change your mind. And in the future, there will be opportunity to make changes if that's what you desire. But tonight, we should approve this. This should not have turned into this contentious discussion that it turned into. We have a room full of applicants that have stepped up and are willing to serve and we should appoint them here tonight. So, that's all I have to say with that one. So, we'll go ahead and we'll conclude the council deliberation with that. And that brings us to taking action on this item. So, I will make a motion to approve staff's recommendations, numbers two and three, to ratify all of the nominations on the agenda tonight. There's a motion and a second. Please vote. So, that motion fails. Two yes votes to three no votes. So, once again, just wanna thank all the applicants. Apologize that you were not appointed tonight. But I hope that this does not discourage you from continuing to serve. I commend you for being willing to step up and I definitely wanna make sure that you come back and that we can get at least one or the vote here from my colleagues on the council. So, once again, I apologize. But I want you all to keep that same energy and make sure that you continue to stay involved here in the city. So, thank you for being here. Next, we're still on item G. And we're gonna move now to item A6 that was pulled from the consent calendar. And we'll start first with any council questions of staff if so desired. Seeing none, that'll move us to the public comment period for item A6. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
We have one public speaker, Roy Blackard.
Isn't this public policy stuff fun? Our comment on this item first is honesty in government. We talk about integrity and all this other stuff. And it's listed as affordable housing. As I explained before, and it is not affordable housing. A truth-filling, maybe subsidized housing. Somebody somewhere made up that difference. Affordable housing... Affordable housing is not in California. The highest, what is it, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, the average price here? Is because of the public policy we have tolerated. Now, this program might be fine. I have some questions about it, the pro-housing designation program. And, okay, we're applying from grants. Grants from who? What's the process? Who's getting them? Who has the authority to put this stuff together if we do apply and get them? Is the city of Moreno Valley going to make these decisions or designate where this money goes? And I will say, some of the last debate gave me a little bit of hope that the city might be going in a right direction, but we still have some divisive forces, I believe, in this city that we need to solve before I think people put trust in this community that we can actually deal with this kind of stuff. And I think that would be part of the application process and the way who's ever dealing these grants are. So the reason this should be, and I've said, you need at least two steady sessions a month. These things should be brought out in a report, explained to the public, got, get some input of how, if we're going to go after this stuff, what's the best way to do it? Who's the best people we got to, best minds to get to it if we're going to make this thing successful? That's what we don't talk about. We started a little bit in the last item. And just because I got a little time left, Mr. Cabrera and the city attorney mentioned it. What do you think? Do you think, how do you think Darryl Terrell felt when I called him up and said, on the city's agenda, it says denied on his deal? That was the question I had, not the highway you took off on.
Let's try to stay on the topic for this item.
So I just wanted to clarify that. You want to call him out? We'll call him out. You you want to have these discussions here, or do you want to hear about him elsewhere? Thank you.
Madam Clerk, any other public speakers for this item?
No, not for this item, Mayor.
Understood. And just before we, before we move on, just for, for the public record, was just informed that Councilmember Marquez is going to be leaving the meeting. He's, he has to leave the meeting. So just for for the public record, want to make sure that we state that, and we'll we'll go ahead and continue with the meeting. So that concludes public comment on that item. That brings us to council deliberation. If desired, please hit your speaker button if you'd like to deliberate or make comments. Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve staff's recommendations.
All motion.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. And, yeah, I'm not sure how, if we, for the record, can just record the vote as four yeses with Councilmember Marquez absent for this vote.
I already noted that, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us now to item A seven. It's the last item that was pulled before we move on to H. So item A seven is about the general plan, annual progress report, and first, we have council questions of staff. If desired, please hit your speaker button. Seeing none, that moves us to public comment. Madam Clerk, any requests to speak?
Yes, we have one, Roy Blackard.
Main question I have on the general plan progress report is the eco freaks we're suing on that and had the whole thing filed up. We had a recent project that came on that was appealed, and mainly the basis of that was, oh, they wanted to protect their lawsuit. So I would like an update if that, if that case is still going on, if they're trying to hijack, still doing that on the general plan of that. And my second point is the same thing, is these things should not be on the consent calendar. The, this is a very important item that should be, it should be coming, and it used to be. I mean, we can pull the, we can pull, what, we got twenty years of videotape? We can pull the tapes on this and look at it and see how this ran before. And I think that would stop a lot of this, or maybe of that, of people coming up here and not knowing what's going on or having that, because we've been hijacking the policy of that. We, we use the COVID excuse on that to do this a lot, but again, I will say this, if we're going to change, and we should change for the better, let's start doing it now.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. That brings us now to council deliberation if desired. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve staff's recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please vote. And Madam Clerk, it's telling me that we're waiting on Councilmember Marquez here. Should we just?
We'll note that he's, he's absent.
Okay. Do you want me to hit anything here and just leave that?
You can log it off.
We'll just do a voice vote for this one and record that vote. Madam Clerk, call for a voice vote, please.
Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Bernard?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Delgado?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mayor Cabrera?
Yes. That item passes for yeses. And that now brings us to item H. First one is H one, general business, the student of the month program sponsorship. And we have a report of our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you tonight is student of the month program sponsorship. So kind of the overview of the program is the yearly program begins in September and concludes in May. One student from each high school is recognized among eleven local high schools participating. Seventy-seven high school seniors are recognized per school term. Representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, State Legislature, county and municipal councils participate in the monthly recognition. So the purpose of the program brings, it is to bring the community together, honoring students for demonstrating character, integrity, love of learning, environment, involvement in school, athletics, activities, and community service. The program also recognizes students that have overcome adversities without compromising their education. The student of the month is the student that makes a difference in their home, school, and community, that is college or trade school bound. Participating schools, Moreno Valley Unified School District and Valverde Unified School District are the two school districts that participate. Monthly recognitions, students and their families are honored and recognized by their principals and teachers. Representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, State Legislature, County, and Municipal Councils attend the monthly breakfast recognition, wherein the distinguished high school students tell their heartfelt stories. Suma Kalad Ladi sponsor is five thousand. These are the different sponsorship tiers. The doctorate sponsor is twenty-five hundred, and the master's sponsor is a thousand. Bachelor's sponsor is seven fifty, and the associate's sponsor is five hundred. At the request of Mayor Cabrera, a one thousand dollar sponsorship is being sought forth, is being brought forth for the council's consideration. The sponsorship also includes a monthly breakfast gathering for one person to attend all seven luncheons and the annual recognition dinner for two. It is staff's recommendation that the city council approve a thousand dollar sponsorship of the program conducted by the Moreno Valley Valverde Student of the Month Program. We've also got, the founder of this program is, is here. Her name is Karina Zermino, and she's available if you'd like to ask questions of her or me, I'm available also. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That will bring us now to, or if you'd like, Karina, to go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Karina Zermino. I'm the founder of the student of the month program. This program actually has been in place for eleven years, and it has been, I currently work with seven different school districts. We're adding two more this upcoming school year, and it's really to honor students who have overcome difficult life challenges. These students normally are not recognized at school because their academics are not at the level where they normally would get recognized, and this is due to their challenges that they have managed to overcome and still do well in school. And I'm open to questions.
Thank you very much. And that does bring us, well, before we go to public comment, I see a request here from Mayor Protem Delgado. Do you have any questions or comments for Ms.?
I do have some comments. Karina, I attend your, your breakfasts, breakfasts? And I will tell you, I leave there inspired every single time because these kids are, they're an absolute inspiration from their challenges of their stories. And they get up there and they, like I said before, they're not great public speakers, but they're speaking from the heart. And again, like I said, I, I totally support that. Actually, if, if it's a little low, but I, I totally support that. So you're doing a great thing, and I see you up there with your passion, and no one's making you do this, and I recognize that, and and we appreciate that for our kids in both districts. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for attending. And just know that the sponsorship is not just for one event, it's for eight events, and it's throughout the school year.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I'll just briefly, before, before we get to public comment, just briefly also say thank you, Karina, for the work that you do there for student of the month. And I know it's not easy, you know, you put a lot of time and effort into that, and you definitely have a big impact on a lot of students, you know, lives in particular. And so thank you for bringing this to our attention, because quite honestly, we probably should have been sponsoring this a long time ago. And, but it's on our agenda today, and so it's at a thousand dollars just because it's right in the middle, but if the council is open to it, I would love to see that increase. You know, if if the council wants to go up, a hundred percent support that, you know, so we can sponsor at a higher level as well. But just thank you. Thank you for the work that you're doing, and, you know, look forward to attending those events in the future as well.
Thank you. Thank you for attending.
All righty. Unless there's any other questions or comments from the council, we'll go ahead and move on to, to public comment.
We've got two speakers, Roy Blackard and Luis Palomeros.
Nice program, and I support it and Ms. Zermino's efforts of putting it together. But what I do have the question of is who gets the money? The students get the money for this that's all being raised, or where is it going? If we're just doing this to pay for meals and we're paying for public funds, I mean, we have discretionary funds, you guys have that. That could be easily handled without even an action by the council. So again, when we're dealing with the public funds and you're requesting them, where does this stuff go? You know, if you're a private corporation or something and you want to give money to this organization, find and dandy, and you can do that. But again, in this area of supposed to be transparency, we're looking at how, you know, we're, we're changing. If that's what the the key word is, then let's explain where this, where this is going, because I have questions. I have no idea where our thousand dollars is going and what it's applied for. Now, if it's going to the kids for the students of the month, I might say, yeah, thumbs up on that, that's a great idea. It's going to pay for meals for our representatives to attend that. You know, I think you should pay for them yourself. That's just my opinion of it, of that. You know, if, and again, let's recognize the kids. Let's put them first, and if there's going to be some rewards or money or cash deals on that, let that go to them. I would like to see that. If our public funds are put that way, that's where I would like to see them directed.
The next speaker is Luis Palomeros.
Luis Palomeros, community activist. I agree, we need to up the ante here, give more money, but like Roy said, if it goes directly to the student scholarship, to them, not for overhead or anything, give them, give them more discretionary funds. We all got a discretionary fund here, give them more. Thank you for the lady that came out here and brought this out for Valverde and Moreno Valley Unified School District. And, you know, let's up the ante, and the hard question is, answer the question, where? Where's it going to go to? Does it get divided up in, a lot of pieces are going directly to the students. That's what I want to know. The students, give it to the students, we need it for them. And these are students that are kind of at risk. That's what I'm hearing, maybe I'm wrong. So I think it's a great scholarship, up the ante, keep it going, and thank you for bringing it to the council.
Any, are there any other public speakers for this?
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. I would like to give an opportunity for Ms. Zermino if she would like to, to maybe respond to some of those questions as well.
Thank you. Great question. So for the Moreno Valley Valverde Student of the Month Program, we currently have thirteen committee members. All committee members are volunteers. March Field Museum provides the space for us to attend and and host the breakfast at no cost. The funds raised for the program go to our students. On a monthly basis, there is a gift backpack filled with goodies for them to take, as well as seven to ten different dignitary certificates that they can utilize for scholarship applications, job applications, that will assist them for their future. And at the end of the year, we have a student of the year dinner, scholarship dinner, and one student from each one of the high schools will be selected as student of the year, where we take the funds collected and we divide them into the eleven students. So whatever that dollar amount is at the end of the school year, we divide that into eleven, and the students will receive a scholarship for that dollar amount. So everyone's a volunteer, all the funds go directly to our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will bring us now to council deliberation or any council comments if so desired. I see one request here from Councilmember Santa Cruz.
I think it was a great idea, Roy, said that we have our discretionary funds and a thousand dollars for districts. I'd be willing to put two hundred and fifty dollars of discretionary money towards sponsorship that we would each do. Why does it come to us as a thousand dollars like this? Why didn't it just come to us as individuals to use our discretionary funds? Why is it coming out of elections budget savings?
Do you want to respond, Mayor?
I don't really have an answer. I think she was hoping to ask staff for some information about that.
I'm willing, you're willing to?
Well, I, I don't have an answer for you, but I will have a comment, and that's, we do not have this in a line item on the budget. We, we recognize that we want to participate in our community and by doing this. So talking to the city manager and the finance director, we are going to look into putting this in a future budget so we can move forward with this. Now, if there are funds or monies remaining in a particular budget item, line item, I don't see any harm with helping these kids, because again, I see their faces, and it's not just a meal for the people and the electeds in the room. These kids get to eat and to, they're extremely nervous. These kids get to eat and to, they're extremely nervous while they're eating, getting ready to get called up to the podium. To me, that's worth every penny for our city to support that. Now, again, financially, we don't have it on a light item. We're going to go, just like any other budgeteer, we're going to go look for it in some other area in the budget that has, I wouldn't say excess, don't, don't even say that, Brian. I know you're looking at me like excess, nothing, but, um, funds that have not been used yet. So we look at that and we say, can we use that in this area, um, for this particular purpose? And I think that's where this whole thing generated is, is, it's not, because we, we don't want to take it out of our discretionary funds, because I would. But moving forward, we're going, we're gonna, we're gonna fix this as far as that, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. And I won't reiterate what you said, uh, but, um, I had asked for the item to be placed on the agenda as a sponsorship and staff did the rest of the work. So, um, you know, they figured out, I guess, a way to fund it and they put it on our agenda. So, um, like Mayor Protem said, moving forward, uh, there might be some changes to that in the future. But, uh, for tonight, it's a one thousand dollar sponsorship for that. So, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve staff's recommendations.
I'll motion to approve the thousand dollars.
I'll, I'll second the motion. Uh, there's a, uh, motion by Mayor Protem Delgado and, uh, a second by myself. Please vote.
Can we abstain for Councilmember Marquez or are the rest of these voice votes from here on out?
I think he's logged off. I, I see it logged out here on the computer. We should be good now. Yeah, there you go. Okay, perfect. Uh, so that item passes for yeses. Um, congratulations. That now brings us to item H2, which is commercial vehicle parking. Uh, we have a report of Public Works, a, a report from Michael Lloyd this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of City Council. This item is a summary of on-street commercial, um, part, vehicle parking at the request of the mayor. Municipal Code Section 12.38 identifies criteria of where commercial vehicles are not allowed. The criteria includes streets within a residential district, vacant, unimproved, non-residential property, areas within 100 feet of any, uh, human dwelling unit, areas within 150 feet of a driveway, areas adjacent to a public facility, among others. Another important aspect of locating commercial vehicle parking on the street is accessibility to an established truck route. There are currently seven locations identified within the city available for on-street commercial vehicle parking. Of the seven current locations, five have time restrictions due to adjacent businesses and commercial properties. The existing parking areas are generally south and southwest of City Hall, as well as in the industrial area in the southern part of the city. Any new locations for consideration will have to be evaluated to confirm that the municipal code criteria are being met. Reviews would include field observations being conducted to confirm the proposed locations would not have a detrimental effect on the condition of the street pavement, would not create safety hazards, would not impact the adjacent property owners, have access to truck routes, among other items. Steps, uh, needed to conduct those reviews would involve preparing a request for proposals, hiring a consultant, and then conducting the reviews. Depending on the scope of the study, the process could take up to nine, six to nine months to complete and cost up to $100,000. This concludes, uh, the report. I'm available for any questions. Uh, one thing I, I would like to note, if it's council's desire to move forward with reviewing additional locations for on-street commercial vehicle parking, then I, I would recommend council provide specific direction on locations to review, preferably specific, uh, street segment locations. This will assess, uh, assist city staff in narrowing the scope of the study, uh, that needs to be conducted and also help control costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate the report. That will bring us to any council questions of staff if so desired. Seeing none, we will move now to public comment on this particular item. Madam Clerk, any requests to speak?
Roy Blackard is the only one.
Remember looking at the deal when the March, uh, deal and the Clear Zone and that and talking about parking. You know, with truck parking, my idea, my, the thought that flashed through my head is theirs, why don't we run that whole thing as a truck parking area? Easy solutions and we're going to deal with this more, but hiring consultants in eight months and that, want to change, want to do things different? Let's start by not doing things the old way. They never get anything, hardly ever get anything accomplished. And then when they do, it's all filed up anyway. So again, it's just a way of innovatively looking at solutions to a problem that you hear almost on a meeting by meeting basis, somebody brings this issue up. You know, we have a industry, the logistics in the trucking industry is the biggest economic generator in this area. Zero vacancy in 500,000 plus warehouses or industrial buildings, as they should be called. Isn't that correct, Mr. Lee, Economic Director? And this is what you got to prepare for. You should be on this. There should be a plan drawn up. Here's where we're going to put the parking. Here's where we're going to put it. You know what? We're going to be number one in this industry. We're going to lead. We're going to attract companies to come to Moreno Valley because we have the infrastructure in that to make them succeed. Again, maybe we wouldn't even be having that discussion with March Air Force Base and all this other stuff if we had been putting our collective heads together, if our representatives on the JPA had their act together and bring this stuff up. This is what happens when we don't be proactive and we're not on the gas. Hit fifth gear, overdrive. I want to see it full speed ahead. I want to see reports up here. And I want this council to man the staff, bring them. That's what your job. We're going to have just some discussions about the city manager form of government, how it's supposed to work and how you don't make it work. And this is a prime A number one example. Get on the gas, get it done. I mean, I see progress. I'm not wanting to say that totally negative on it. But sometimes you got to bang the pots and pans loud to get some action.
Luis Palomeros is the final speaker.
Luis Palomeros, community activist. You know, this truck route that they want to put through, it's going to cost a lot of money, a lot, a lot of money. Saying all that, the residents don't want it there. The residents don't want it there. So I don't see the point in doing all this when there's other parkings in other areas on the east end. I, I don't think it's a great idea at all. It's going to cost a lot of money to do it. And then how long is it going to take? So who came up with that, this bright idea? I better not go there, but yeah, I think it's going to cost a lot of money. Uh, we're going to have trucks going through the side streets, like, uh, they're complaining about it already on the east end. They're complaining about those trucks that are idling over there already. So I guess you, you got a hard decision to make here. And, um, I agree with some of what Roy said. Thank you.
That concludes public comment, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, that brings us to council deliberation if desired. And I do see a request here from Mayor Protem Delgado.
So one of the speakers said this is a tough decision. This is a tough decision because it involves our money and it involves your money. Um, however, we have become a, a go-to, uh, city for an industry that uses trucks. And we're, it's only going to get worse with the world logistics coming in soon. Um, I, and what I would like to do is ask, uh, my peers to postpone this. Um, and follow up with, um, Mr. Lloyd's recommendation to, um, find an area or find areas in which we could do this. Now, um, I, I have to agree that we, we need it. I've already been approached by many people about truck parking because we've, we've brought all these, uh, Chief shaking his head. We've brought all these, um, warehouses in, which is good for our economy and good for, for us. And we, we, we've done it. Um, we don't have anywhere for them to park if they're locals and they work here. So, um, we need it. We need it somewhere. I'm just not prepared to follow up on your recommendation to, uh, recommend a location right now. Um, but, yeah, I mean, if you guys wanted to move forward tonight, it is what it is, but, um, that's a lot of money. Um, and I don't think that we were planning on a hundred thousand dollars for this, right, in our current budget?
Correct.
So I, I mean, I think that we, and, and going off of your recommendation to find, uh, another area or areas, maybe we can, um, bring this back to discuss it at another time for, um, a more, a deeper dive into where.
Next we have Councilmember Bernard.
I'm in total, um, agreement with, um, with Mayor Protem Delgado, uh, because he's correct. This is an industry that we, whether people like it or not, it's here. We, um, have nowhere for these trucks to park. I've gotten complaints from residents because they're parking on residential streets. Um, they're coming down, even though we, we are trying to enforce truck routes, they're coming down, um, residential streets. I have, the way I live, I've seen them come down my street and trust me, no semi-trucks should ever be coming down my cul-de-sac. Um, and it's true. We, we need to do something. We need some type of infrastructure for truck parking. We don't have truck parking. We don't have a place for if their trucks break down where they can fix them at. Um, I, I guess the best example of what we would need is a truck stop like area where they could park their trucks, but also have the ability to get them worked on would be something similar to, yeah, like when you're out in the city of Ontario or something like that. But I agree with, with, um, with Councilmember Delgado. I agree with you, Michael. I have no idea today to pinpoint where they can go. So I would need some time to research it myself to figure out where, um, we could go, because there's a lot of parameters. And I want to make sure that we, um, when we do this, we get it right. And we make sure that we, we get these trucks off of some of these areas and get them in parking where they belong.
Thank you. And, uh, just to provide a couple of comments here, because, um, I did ask for this item to be agendized. Um, a couple of questions, uh, if I may. Um, I know part of the staff report, actually was not expecting that, but it, it's in the staff report. The, um, hundred thousand dollars, uh, price tag for hiring a consultant. Is this something that we have, have we done that before? Like, has the city hired consultants to study this, uh, item specifically?
It has been studied in, in the past. My recollection is it was probably five to six years ago now. Uh, the most recent analysis that was performed of our existing available, uh, on-street parking was done in 2019. And, and that was conducted by staff. But if the direction from council is to do a comprehensive study of all, all streets across the city, then that's the hundred thousand. So I needed to provide you the worst case scenario. As we start to narrow the scope, if we get down to six streets, that's much more manageable. It, it's even possible staff might be able to do it without having to go through the consulting route.
Thank you, Michael. And yes, I think all of us probably, including myself, would rather not spend a hundred thousand dollars on something like this. Uh, again, I was not expecting that in the staff report. So that's why I ask, because, um, that, that's new to me. Uh, what I had in mind was more of, uh, kind of us and, and staff looking at, um, maybe some of the commercial truck parking that we've had in the past. And, um, I've seen where in the city it might be a good fit to maybe add a street or something. So, um, yeah, I, I don't, I don't want to go down the path of spending a hundred thousand dollars on a citywide comprehensive plan. Uh, so I definitely agree with those comments. Um, and as you mentioned, thank you, Michael, for mentioning as well that before the city has kind of done those things, some of those at a much smaller scale internally, um, uh, which is something that is, is doable as well. And that's more, more of what I have in mind. And, um, like my colleagues have already said, I think perfectly said it, right? The city has grown exponentially, especially in industrial development, specifically distribution centers. And distribution centers bring more commercial trucks, 18-wheelers, big rigs, et cetera. Um, a lot of those, um, the truck drivers actually live in our community. And many of them own their trucks, whether that's semis, tow trucks or other commercial vehicles. They live here. They own houses here. Um, they shop here. And one thing that we hear every now and then come up is that there isn't enough parking, uh, for especially the people that live here in our city. So, um, if the city is gonna, you know, has, has historically already grown in, in the industrial space and, um, you know, the WLC is, is in the future as well. It's 40 million square feet. That's going to bring a lot more trucks to the city also. I think we currently don't have the capacity as it is to support, um, the trucks that are out there. So we do need to be proactive, like Roy said, um, and plan in the future, uh, to make sure that all those, however many trucks are going to be coming for the WLC or any other industrial developments out there. We need to make sure that we're planning accordingly and providing safe places for commercial truck drivers to actually park. Um, because right now I think there's a little bit more work to be done there. Um, I know that in the past, uh, when I was still council member, uh, we used to have commercial parking over off of Cosmos, just off of Heacock, but that was taken out for safety reasons because there was something specifically with the driveway and some safety issues there coming out of one of the warehouses. So that was removed, but we didn't really replace it, you know, somewhere else in the city. So we took that parking away, but we didn't provide, uh, any real alternative. So, um, just, just want to say that I, I, the only location that I can think of, because we have truck parking here in this area around City Hall. We still have some truck parking over off of Heacock, uh, near Gentian. But where I think we don't have any truck parking is anywhere on the east side. Uh, even though we have industrial development over off of, uh, I think it's Eucalyptus. We have Solaris Paper, um, Prologis has their site there and Aldi is there as well. And the thing is, there's already a lot of people that park on the dirt lots across the street from Skechers. It's not, it's not an improved lot. It's a vacant dirt lot. Uh, so that's something that I think we need to address. While, uh, at the same time being sensitive to residential uses and things like that, making sure that we're keeping trucks away from houses and schools, et cetera. So, um, that's the only area that I could think of where I think it would be good to, to try to find a location for it next to the existing warehouses. Um, and so, uh, other than that, I don't have any specific locations, but maybe this is something that we could put on a study session, you know, to come back, talk about it some more and dive into some, some more details. So, um, I don't think staff is looking for any action. This is more of a receive and file. But, um, if the council's up for it, we could put it on a study session sometime over the next, you know, month or two. Um, I could do it or if the council wants to vote on that now, we could do that now.
We should probably just dial it in now instead of saying it's going to come on a future agenda and then it, it just floats, so.
Perfect. Uh, would you like to make a motion for that?
Yes. So I'll motion to put it on a study session, um, in approximately a month. I don't, I don't know, city count, uh, city manager, timeframe wise.
Yeah, the next, yes, thank you. The next one's May 11. I think we need to give staff a little bit more time. So if we could look at the May study session, that'll, that'll be preferable.
For May, yes. So I'll motion to, uh, put this on a study session for May 9, 2023.
Any second for that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Protem and, uh, second from Councilmember Bernard. Please vote. And that passes 4-0. So we'll, uh, review this, um, in a study session for May 9th, uh, to come back on, on this item. So that moves us now, we're getting down to the end here. Uh, moves us now to item H3 on the agenda, which is the Momentum Moval, uh, Current Strategic Plan for the City of Moreno Valley. We have a report from our city manager.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. Um, the item before you tonight, uh, is a report that, is a report that discusses, um, the current, uh, strategic plan that we have, which is more commonly known as Momentum Moval. Um, and recommends, uh, approval, uh, sorry, um, and recommends approval of the continued use of the six strategic priorities, um, that I'll be discussing here shortly, uh, which are currently in the strategic plan, um, as the priorities that govern, uh, the management of the city, including but not limited to the budget, uh, the capital improvement plan, uh, the various programs and services that we provide. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, go through. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and go through a quick presentation. I'm not going to go through and read every single word that's on the slide as this was in the packet and I will forward this to you, the slide deck to you in email tomorrow morning. The six strategic priorities that govern Momentum Moval are these that are on your screen. So economic development, public safety, library, infrastructure, beautification, community engagement, and quality of life, and youth programs. As part of prior council, or previous, sorry, prior council, they embarked on this particular project back in 2015 and 2016 in creating a new strategic plan. At that particular point in time, they received many resident engagements through community meetings. They had various surveys that went out to the community, received a lot of response from them as to what the residents would like to see as strategic priorities. As a result of those efforts, along with council's planning session, it all culminated and resulted in a consensus that the participating councilmembers provided several key principles to guide development of the strategic plan, as well as the implementation in the years ahead of that particular plan. That plan then became the developing priorities, objectives, and initiatives from the financial capabilities of the city, as well for budget and capital improvement programs and plans, and has been in every single decision that the current management makes related to any type of resource allocation. In this particular plan, I mentioned the six strategic priorities. Each of those priorities has an additional blurb with what those priorities are. So for economic development, basically it was to attract new business opportunities or create new business opportunities, job creation, strategic partnership, and workforce development, and provide proactive business attraction, small business development, and so forth. Really, if you take a look at these particular items, this is exactly what we are currently still governed by and this is what we're still doing. We still have thirty to, thirty-five, forty percent of our community to build out through the 2040 general plan, so this is still very relevant. With each of the strategic priorities, there were various objectives and so forth as part of the strategic plan that was included in the staff report tonight, as well was part of the agenda packet that was issued to the residents. I'm not going to go into every single one of these objectives, I'm just going to stick to the main priorities. The next priority was public safety. When you're looking at public safety, those priorities are focusing on reducing crime through traditional and innovative policing models or methods, preparing our community for emergencies, protecting life and property, and exploring cost-effective solutions. Again, this is still very poignant in looking at what public safety does from not only the law enforcement side, but also fire services, as well as when we're looking at resource allocation and the budget, these are the various things that we're looking at as well. Again, I'll go ahead and skip the objectives, as you guys can read those if so desired after I send this to you tomorrow morning. Library, as part of the strategic plan, this was to deliver library services that empower our residents through open access to knowledge, employing both traditional and contemporary methods. So if you recall, back at this particular point in time, we only had one library. Since this time, we've actually implemented two satellite libraries, so we have a total of three at this particular point in time. Infrastructure being the next strategic priority. Obviously, we, we have assets that the city needs to maintain. That's called our public infrastructure. We need to make sure that we maintain that to provide excellent quality of life, development, implement, innovative, cost-effective, infrastructure maintenance programs, and also our public facility maintenance strategies and our capital improvement, improvement programming. So keep in mind, all of these various things, when you look at facilities and you look at infrastructure, anytime we bring on new projects, new programs, and so forth that council desires, there's always a cost of how do we maintain those various assets that we're bringing on our books? And so we have to then talk to our facilities division and ensure that we have budgetary resources so that they're able to maintain those additional assets as well. The next strategic priority is the beautification, community engagement, and quality of life. So this one is probably the most overarching priority that we have. Promote an active and engagement community where we work together to beautify our shared environment, care for each other, and enjoy access to cultural and recreational amenities that support a high quality of life. So this is why, when you look at our parks and community services division, some of the various programings we have with our various sponsorship and Beautify Moval, innovate, or sorry, initiatives for residents and businesses to be able to sponsor various streets and/or parks and trails. These are all the programs that were created as part of this priority is to ensure that we engage our residents as much as possible, bring them into the fold so that, one, they know what government does, but more importantly, they understand what all the programs and services we offer them, as well as all the events that we have throughout the city. Youth programs, obviously, you know, there's a lot of been, a lot of conversation about youth tonight. We always want to make sure that we're improving the lives of our future and the city youth by expanding healthy lifestyle choices and learning opportunities. Obviously, since this particular priority, strategic priorities were created, the teen center or teen spot had been developed. We have almost ten million dollars worth of funding for after-school programs and educational programs as those are the hours between three and six are the most crucial for youth programming to ensure that we're able to engage those youth after school, but prior to their parents getting home so that they're less likely to get into trouble. Again, management focuses on these strategic priorities as we move away from how the Momentum Moval was created. Management does focus on these with every decision that we do make. More importantly, in building the budget, it is the second main goal that we, we strive for. So one, for the budget development, we look at maintaining a balanced general fund budget. The second is how many of the Momentum Moval priorities are met through the various resource allocations that we have in any given budget or budget year. As well as community engagement has always been key through Join the Conversation platform. So back in 2017, we created Join the Conversation platform and we continue to use this platform for surveys of our residents to ensure that the priorities that, one, were created back in 2015, 16, but more importantly, any priorities that we're seeing that potentially deviate or that are new are given resource allocation through the budget. So in this particular last round of surveys, prior to the, the new biennial budget going into effect in July 1st of 23, these are the bulleted items that were of priority to our residents. Preventing robberies and burglaries, maintaining 911 emergency response time, maintaining the number of fire engines in service, and gang and youth violence prevention programs. Those are the prevention programs that I've been talking about in the afternoon hours. Maintain safe and clean parks and public areas, repairing pothole and roads. Obviously, that's probably the, the, the main priority that we've seen over the last several years, and addressing homelessness as well. With that, I'm going to, sorry, with that, I'm going to conclude my presentation and just state that based on council direction tonight, if for some reason it is decided that council directs staff to move forward with creating a new strategic plan, there was a financial impact. So we're looking at anywhere between seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand plus a year's worth of work in bringing a strategic plan back to council. It would obviously have all of the public engagement, along with roughly four hundred hours of departmental time of each of the departments in, in being engaged in part of that project. If for some reason a full new program or plan is not requested or directed of staff, then we'd be looking at a revision that could potentially be anywhere between fifty to sixty thousand and about six months' worth of work. Or staff's recommendation in which all of the six strategic priorities, based on most recent surveys, are still well poignant within our residents' priorities, we would still like to continue living out the Momentum Moval priorities in our current budget and capital improvement plan, as well as all the various programs and services that the city manager and the city management, manager's office bring to this particular council for recommendations of staff. With that, I conclude my presentation and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Brian. Appreciate that report. And that will bring us to public comments on this item. Madam Clerk, any requests to speak here?
Yes, Roy Blackard.
First thing that strikes me is seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars. Really? I'll tell you this, go back 2014, I put together a redistricting plan for this area in three days that is still in effect today. Versus fifty grand or whatever, a hundred thousand we paid consultants to draw district maps and all this other noise. And the ditch bank oaky from Edgemont figured it out like that. We don't have to do this. Momentum Moval, let's go back. You want to bring up Deborah Craig or Pete? How Mayor X back then, when we were at Edgemont, shut down the process? Join the conversation? I will give you an example. And not, this hasn't happened since Tom Owings, and well, he forced the deal of it. But your chief during the, during the break there said, hey, I want to talk to you about this public safety thing. We could put this together like that. Momentum Moval, if you put, if you turn loose the talent and abilities in this city to form a Momentum Moval plan, not a bunch of ridiculous consultants that don't give a rip about Moreno Valley, they're just looking to grab a dollar out of this place. The stuff isn't complicated. It's not rocket science. It's not real hard to figure out where to park a truck. Or how to build an economic powerhouse. The problem is, it's real easy to destroy that. And again, I bring this stuff up to hopefully further the conversation and focus and get things going in the right direction. Set it the acronym any time, C. Simple, effective, and efficient. Now you should be looking at everything. How do we get this done? How do we get it done quickly? Not talking about six months and a hundred thousand this and two million dollars of that. Just like you put in public safety and everything else. We could have better public safety at less cost and maybe we wouldn't be watching so many funeral processions going on. It's that serious at times. That's why I bring this stuff up. Hopefully, we'll get it together.
Luis Palomera is the next speaker.
Wow, it's not rocket science. The staff just told you that it's working. Why do we want to break it? Why do we want to take a whole year and spend over a hundred thousand dollars, maybe even more? When something that's working, I wonder who's to brainchild? Was this your bright idea, Cabrera, wasting staff's time again? Golly, they worked hard on this last, here I go, the last plan. Why do we got to go there again? They got a lot of other things to do. We got a lot of other needs like housing, homeless people, parks in, in other districts besides District Three. We got a lot of other things to do. We got a lot of other needs to meet here. You know, come on, over a hundred thousand, are you serious? The animal shelter could use some more money. The animal shelter, what is it? Are you trying to turn this whole city upside down and flip it off? I don't know how many meetings we've had, we're here for four or five hours. And a study session, that's another thing. Why don't you do it on a Wednesday or a Thursday, opposite planning commission? Because we're running from school boards over here because we're doing things over there too. We're helping fix bathrooms, air conditionings, get rid of bungalows. We're doing a lot of stuff over there. But we got to run over here because you want to have a study session. Not on Valentine's Day, not on that Tuesday, though. Come on, when is it going to end? How many more meetings are going to have night all meetings, study sessions, et cetera, et cetera? It's a lot of money. Staff works hard. They've done a good job with what they're doing as far as the current plan. Why do we have to change it? I don't know what your agenda is. You have all these people coming, you know, great people, you know, on the commissions that want to come fill them. It's all great, but you didn't give anybody else a chance in the shot here. And you're always saying about, oh, well, when it was this way and that way, when I was, we're not talking about when. We're talking about today. We're not talking about yesterday when you didn't get a turn and you didn't get a shot. We're talking about today, isn't it a new day? Isn't that what you said? You want to change it? You want to turn it around? You want to make it happen for the community? I don't know. You know, the Gonzalez, I remember when he was a good commission, you know, I'm, I'm going. But what bothers me and what's interesting to me, Marcus, Marcus, he's in Marcus's camp. So that means he's in your camp. So I don't, I don't feel comfortable. But that's all right, I'm not saying anything against him, he's all good in that way. But you're going to manipulate him because you've already done, you got your people.
Let's keep it to Momentum Moval.
Okay, let me keep it here. So as far as the strategic plan, don't, don't fix it, it's not broken. It's not broken. Look at our, everybody works here, they got to go to work the next day. They're all working right now, but you don't got a job. You're on the campaign trail all day long, ribbon cuttings and everything. Get on this, do something, people for parking? Get something going parking over here, not on the east end.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us now to council deliberation if desired. If you have any comments, please hit your speaker button. I do see a request here from Mayor Protem Delgado. Is that for this item?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I will just say that the plan that was presented tonight, and obviously you're going to send it to, to us tomorrow, I did get a chance to look at that. I think it is effective. We need to concentrate on more public safety and not, I, I don't think we should spend seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars on something that we already have. So I think that if, if we are going to spend more money leaving our city, I think it should be put to something that we, we certainly need and don't have. More deputies or more firefighters or, or a dog park. But so I, I would, I, I like it the way it is.
Next, we have Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
I concur with Mayor Protem. I believe that we have a plan, we still have thirty, forty percent of it left. Why would we want to spend money now on this when we have high priority needs? Public safety, infrastructure, a dog park, wifi. There's a lot that our residents need more than us spending money on a consultant to revamp something that's still working. So I, I think that we should follow recommendation two to direct the staff. So I, I think that we should follow recommendation two to direct the staff to continue to work with the priorities as set and move forward.
Any comments, Councilmember Bernard? Okay, just briefly, so I asked for this item to be put on the agenda as a refresher because I honestly can't remember the last time that we went through and just reviewed what the current strategic plan is. So definitely a good refresher for not just the council, but also the public to remind everybody what is within that because it's essentially the guiding document for how we move forward and what happens here in the city. So I did not know that it was that expensive. I also did not ask for any changes to be made. I just asked for it to be on the agenda so we can go over it. So it is good to know, though, the price tag on that as well. So that's helpful. So yeah, I think, you know, going over it again, it really captures, you know, where the city is headed. So I think, you know, city staff is doing an excellent job of getting us in the right direction and yeah, I think it looks pretty good. So I'll leave it there and entertain any motion and a second from the council.
I'll motion to approve recommendation number two.
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. And that passes four zero. And that brings us now to H four, which is the approved construction of a basketball court at Patriot Park. And we have a report from Parks and Community Services.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council members. Bear with me as my report not only includes information, but also includes my unsolicited professional opinion. Oops, excuse me. At the February seventh, two thousand twenty-three, City Council meeting City Council-directed staff to investigate constructing a basketball court at Patriot Park. Patriot Park is a small half acre park that currently currently consists of a playground, grass lawn, picnic tables, and a small walking path. It could accommodate a forty-two foot by fifty-foot court, which is a half court. However, it would, building that court would cover much of the grass lawn. The construction cost is estimated to be between one hundred and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Funding would come from current currently unallocated park div fees. Normally, a project will be reviewed by the PCS subcommittee prior to being placed on the agenda for City Council. However, in this case, since the item was council-directed, it was brought to the PCS subcommittee today, the same day as City Council. The project was reviewed by the PCS subcommittee this afternoon and was not recommended for approval. As you are aware, we are currently in the midst of developing a new Parks, Community Services, and Trails master plan. This process will identify service gaps and needs in terms of parks, facilities, and amenities for our entire city. This will be accomplished through an extensive public outreach process as well as using national and regional standards and benchmarks. The finished document will include recommendations for each of our existing parks as well as priorities for future projects and acquisition for additional park space. This master plan will be the guiding document for the development of future CIP budgets. While we work on the new Parks, Community Services, and Trails master plan, we typically work from the existing CIP unless a project is time-sensitive. Since the basketball court project is not in the current CIP and is not time-sensitive and was not supported by the PCS subcommittee, it is my recommendation that we should, this project should be put on hold until we complete the PCST master planning process and receive the recommendations for Patriot Park. The PCST master plan is scheduled to be completed by the end of the calendar year. That includes my report and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jeremy. That'll bring us now to any council questions of staff if desired. And just a quick question for you, Jeremy. At the end, you kind of answered it there as far as the the plan to look at all of our parks in the city and I guess make recommendations. So you're saying that you expect that to be completed at the end of this, at the end of the year, so November, December?
Yes, it's scheduled, we were scheduled to come back to council by December of this year for approval.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Any questions from from the council? Okay, we will move now to public comment on this item. Madam Clerk, any public speakers?
Yes, we've got three. Daryl Terrell, Christopher Baca, and James Baker.
Mr. Terrell, are you, are you still here? If not, we'll come back if you're still here. We will go ahead and move on to Mr. Baca. We'll, we'll come back to him if.
Yeah, he's busy chatting. Yeah, I was going to say, don't mention any vacant lots. He may give Pep's towing some, some ideals for illegal towings. Anyhow, as far as Mr. Baker's proposal and you were planning on spending a hundred thousand on some, you know, it's about the community and it's about the people. And I really think you should get this, get this basketball court there before the summertime. It's imperative to, you know, help our community, help the youth, and improve that park. Thank you.
James Baker and Tom Gerald Senior.
Mr. James Baker, you're up next here. We'll, we'll call Mr. Terrell after, afterward, yeah. Oh, he's taking his request back. Okay, go right ahead.
He's done for tonight. So am I, it looks like. Anyway, hi, City Council, Mayor, I'm Mayor Protem, City Council and staff. My name is James Baker, second, I'm the former commissioner, park commissioner for City Moreno Valley. And we is, I am here to just a few, say a few things about the park that we, I made a proposal about about a month ago. And they took it under consideration and we will cheerfully go by their recommendations because you guys know more about this than I do. But as far as the park concerned, I've been living there for thirteen years. In fact, I was there when the park was actually constructed and built. I've got the actual, after the ribbon cutting ceremony. This was in two thousand and ten, June fourteenth, two thousand and ten. I was on the commission at that time and we were, you know, did the ribbon cutting. Turned out very nice and I've watched the trees grow for the last thirteen years. So they're a little bit taller now. But as far as the basketball court's concerned, I think it'd be a good idea to go ahead and try to have it if you can look at it again. Because they say, well, some people say they're crying out there, there's a lot of bad things. And I checked with the neighborhood, I checked with the park ranger, I checked with the people that work there. I checked with the guy across the street. Never been a big problem there at all. Another park down the street maybe, but not that park. So hopefully, we can get this done. And I know it takes, with City Hall, it takes a little longer, I understand that. But maybe we can get it done eventually in the future. Because the kids, I talked to the kids out there, the people, and they really want a basketball court. My thing is to keep them off the streets and say, what, you're going to break in our houses? Well, if they're playing basketball, they won't be breaking your house. You know, they got something to do. And the kids are saying that they have to go about a half a mile, miles to another park and play basketball. So we'll see, we can try to get something there for them. And thanks for the information about the the half court, full court, half court. Is this a small park? Actually, it's the smallest park in the city there. And we realized that. So again, my thing is if you improve the park, you know, you improve the neighborhood and improve the morale of the area there, you know. It's likely you have a house and your house is all nice and shining and clean and you cut the grass and you trim the edges. Your neighborhood do the same thing. And then the neighbor will see his grass is bad, he'll go do the same thing in his his house. And eventually, the whole neighborhood turned good. There's private ownership there is involved. And it says the same thing when I started, when I worked on the mountain there. They say, oh, Moreno Valley, city's full of corruption. Let the, let the M, just let the weeds grow over the M. Well, the same thing here. I said, let's go out there and clean it up, fix it. That's what we did and people love it now. In fact, it's been lighted every year since two thousand and fourteen. And it started with this one idea, let's get it cleaned up and see how people respond to it. And so we're saying the same thing here, but get the people have a little pride of
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Was that, that was a full time right there?
Oh, I didn't know. You try never come up here.
Thank you.
Okay.
You get so into it, you get excited.
Yeah, I live out there, you know. Thanks, sir.
Next, we, Madam Clerk.
Next speakers are Tom Gerald Senior, Luis Palomeros, and Roy Blackard.
Tom Gerald, again, speaking on behalf of myself, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members and members of staff and the public. You know, the Bible gives us a good, I'm not going to get religious, but it gives us good simple ways of evaluating since you'll, you shall know them by their works. And Mr. Baker is a consummate workhorse. I mean, the guy is always about the community and always, he brings forth good fruit. And I've seen him in action, you know, my own eyes, I've heard good things, I've, you know, seen the results of it. So, and so I incline to support what he does. But something I was thinking, and some of you have been there a while, once upon a time, there used to be all basketball courts right in front of our, our golf center there where that the buildings are. And one day, it was a long time ago, long before you guys were around on the council and stuff, somebody got the harebrained to yank out all the nets and take down all the standards and everything. It displaced a lot of kids and those courts are always busy. And like Mr. Baker said, you know, you keep the kids productively active and, you know, sports and good community activities, you know, good sportsmanship, it's a good environment. So I support it and I think it's a good thing and a good investment for our youth and for the betterment of the community.
Luis Palomeros, followed by Roy Blackard.
Well, there's some tall people here, huh? Anyway, Luis Palomeros, community activist. The staff did their homework. Lot, a lot of money for a small park. I mean, we can put it elsewhere, getting other parks in other areas that we need. There's not enough parks in certain other areas. And let me ask the question. Hey, my hat's off to James Baker. Nothing got to do with James, he's great. He's a great guy and does a lot of work in our community and all of that. Why is it going to cost over a hundred and ten thousand to build a basketball court? Who do we get the highest bidder in town? Where do we get these numbers from? That's a lot, a lot of money. Gee, if I could have put a pole up there myself, wood with an old, you know, hoop in there. Something has to happen, but that's a lot of money, over a hundred thousand for, there's a lot of other things we need. And like I said, my hat's off to you, James Baker, but I don't know, that's a lot of money for one little park and, and when we got needs in a lot of other areas in our, in our community. So keep on going, though, keep on going. And another question, another note, I'm going somewhere else with this, but how do I get something on the agenda? James Baker came about a month ago, proposed this, it was on the agenda. How do I do that? I propose some stuff, can I? What's going on here? How do I get something on there? I've been here thirty years. How do I do that? I want to know. Tell me, Mayor Cabrera. I'm asking. I've got some things I want to get on the agenda. We got to educate the people about the violation of Brown Act. We got to educate the people about how you put up your political signs three weeks prior. I want that on agenda. Thank you. I'm staying on the subject. So anyway, James Baker, thank you again for all you're doing in our community, James, and keep it going. And as far as this, I, I don't think so, not right now. Maybe another time, but right now, not right now. Let's make that park a little bit bigger so we can have more room. And like, one of the other speakers said, all the, all the basketball courts they took down over here at the small golf course, hey, that's an idea also. Let's go there where everybody is, you can have more than one, maybe we can have a half a dozen. Thank you.
Roy Blackard is the final speaker.
I'm against this. Not really, but I just wanted to see if you were paying attention. And there's some good questions and the basic thing I have and, you know, without getting too far into the weeds of these things. But public safety and all that, and, you know, we have the whole deal with parents concerned about their kids being out and this and that. So I hope maybe, well, maybe the chief will address it or maybe the council will ask him. We actually have a two-star up there from the sheriff's department who has some expertise in this. Give us some assurances of what's going to be happening so we're not back here two years later or talking about or having to take it out or concerns about this, that, and everything else going on and that. I think that would maybe take away some of the angst or something that when these projects come up and like that. And then further explain, like, measure A funds and that, this is not coming out of the general fund budget probably. It's probably coming out of specific, you know, monies that are designated for that. So again, when you're making up these reports and you're doing this and you're presenting it to council from staff, that should be clearly laid out where this stuff is coming from. And then you probably wouldn't have to listen to me so much, which I think would make your days much better. But we can play it this way either way. But again, that's all I have the concern about is we lay this out and alleviate maybe some of the potential problems or yes, we've looked at that and this is what we're putting in place so we don't wind up with that. I hope those questions will be asked. We will see.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us now to council deliberation if desired. And I have two requests here. First, we have Councilmember Shaylinda Bernard.
I would just like to first point out, Roy, we'll never get rid of you. It's okay. And second, so I sit on the subcommittee for parks. And so I want to make sure everyone understands, it's not necessarily about the money, it's not necessarily about the crime. It's the fact that our, our Parks team and Jeremy and Ms. Donna have talked about this. They are putting together a master plan where we're going to be back in review in May of starting to figure out what all our parks need, what we need to do to get them up to standard, what amenities the parks need and what the community as a whole throughout the city would like to see. So what I, and I will say this because I was in the meeting today, so what I pointed out was, I want to make sure that everybody's starting off at the same, at the same playing field. I want to make sure that every park is getting what they need before we put this basketball court in. And I don't know if there's, there's not for me, there's no difference between waiting till December, once the plan is, is thought out, because we can include this in the plan. Between waiting in December and then dealing with this now, because even if we go out, we get a consultant and all of that, there may still not even happen before the summer. So I want to, if we have a plan and we're going to move forward with a plan to have all of these things addressed throughout the city, that's why I said that I would personally think that we should hold off on this and add it to that plan. Because then we can make sure that the money and everything that's coming out was, is everything that's designated specifically for that and is ma, and is, and is matching the master plan that we have. I'm not one to, it's my district, I've walked that area, I have clients in that area. I'm not one that's going to sit up here and talk about public safety because I don't think that area is dangerous, nothing in that area bothers me, so I don't have an issue with that. I just want to make sure that across the board, everything with every park and we're addressing every need with all the parks. I want to make sure we're not putting a basketball court here. And I've got a park over here that probably needs new faucets that are more important right now for the kids during the summer to be able to drink water or something like that. That's all I was asking for.
Next, we have Mayor Protem Delgado.
I will make this quick. So Jeremy, you said that the, the Parks Commission met today, the Parks and Community.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee met today. So your recommendation changed or the summary has changed. And I would agree with Councilmember Bernard that we should wait until the PCST master plan is developed and move forward then. So I, I'm, I would, can I motion now? So do not approve the recommended action as presented and provide the direction and the direction to staff would be wait until the PC, PCST is, master plan is looked at in December of two thousand and twenty-three?
So there's a motion. And before we go to a second, I just want to make a couple of comments as well before we actually go to a vote. I think there's a second here. But just briefly, touche. I think there's a second here, but uh, just briefly, um, touche, uh, echo the comments from both of my colleagues and thank you to staff for um, educating us and reminding us about the various plans that are currently underway and going through the process. That's definitely good to know, uh, that you guys are already studying that and you plan on bringing that back at the end of the year. Um, how did, someone asked, how did this end up on the agenda? It was unanimously approved by the council at a last meeting, so that's how it got on the agenda. And um, I think that, uh, again, it's important to just mention that uh, this particular project, uh, staff identified the funding source as the Parks DIF. So this is not a liability on the general fund or anything else. There's money in that Park DIF specifically to make improvements to our parks. Um, and that money can only be used on parks. So yeah, I think it's a wise idea, probably the best idea to uh, allow the process uh, to go through, allow those studies to take place, um, get community input in the process as well. And, and then on top of this, we currently have that six million dollar uh, project that is underway as well for all of our parks. So uh, yeah, I think it's probably best to uh, just allow the process to go through, get the community input and then see what the community wants at Patriot Park. So that'll conclude my comments and there is a motion uh, from Mayor Pretem, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, please vote. And that passes four, tis, four yeses. And that brings us now to the city council reports. Uh, first up, we will, um, since council member Marquez had to uh, step away from the meeting, uh, we'll have Mayor Pretem do the report for RTA. Uh, so uh, go, go right ahead, Mayor Pretem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, tonight, um, again, I was not there at the meeting, but um, I can uh, give you the agenda summary of what took place. Um, I'm providing updates from the RTA Board of Directors meeting held on February twenty-third and the RTA Board of Administration and Operations Committee held on March first. The board heard a presentation of the RTA's Information Technology Operations and authorized to award an agreement to Helix Strum uh, to provide the information technology managed services. The committee heard a presentation regarding the free bus rides on Earth Day and recommended this item to, to the full Board of Directors for approval. The committee also approved and recommended the full Board of Directors for authorizing staff to add five vehicle transfer applications to the RTA's retired vehicle recipient list, waitlist. That concludes my report on the RTA Board of Directors and Board of Administration and Operation Committee meeting that was held on February twenty-third and March first.
Thank you, Mayor Pretem, next we have a report of uh, WRCOG from Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Um, I attended the March sixth WRCOG Executive Committee meeting and we, that included a presentation from the California Air Resources Board, CARB, on the recently adopted twenty twenty-two scoping plan for achieving carbon neutrality for the state of California. This concludes my report on the last WRCOG meeting, but miss, oh, missing from ours is the School District Joint Force. I have that report as well, do you want me to give that now or wait?
Yeah, I don't see it here, uh, is there, it's not on our agenda here, but go, go right ahead for the Joint Task Force.
The last, um, the Joint Task Force uh, meets every other month. The last meeting was um, um, the twenty-first of the last month. In this meeting is um, representatives from Marina Valley Unified, Valverde Unified, Marina Valley College, Lake Paris and the city of Marina Valley is represented there by Think Together, our police department, Parks and Community Services. And um, topics discussed at the last meeting included um, traffic concerns. Um, everybody was giving kudos to not only the police department who has been doing traffic enforcement around the schools, but also the fact that they're promoting it on social media. So not only are they deterring those who are being ticketed, but also those who um, in the community know that we're out there in force and um, concerned about traffic safety and student safety around the schools. Also was discussion regarding the new school that is being constructed on Nathan and concerns there um, as well. So um, this task force uh, meets every other month and so I look forward to a meeting with them once again. And then there's the RCA.
Yes, so um, I'll be doing the reports for RCA and RCTC. Uh, those are the last two council reports for RCA.
The RCA, I'm the alternate on the RCA committee and they met yesterday. Uh, Marquez, um, council member Marquez did not attend the meeting nor inform anybody that he wasn't gonna attend so that I could go and represent the city. So um, I just wanna put it out there that as the alternate, I should be informed if he's unavailable to attend.
Thank you, so for RCA, we have um, a very brief report. Items covered at the RCA Board of Directors meeting on March sixth included a status report on acquisitions made by RCA. For the final reporting month of the twenty twenty-two calendar year, twenty-four parcels have been acquired for a total of twenty, two thousand two hundred and six acres added to the reserve. Uh, that concludes the report for RCA. And a report for Riverside County Transportation Commission, um, providing updates for the RCTC Budget and Implementation Committee meeting held on February twenty-seventh. The committee approved the proposed commission policy goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. The committee also heard a presentation regarding the formula funding distribution within Riverside County and approved an agreement between the commission and the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, also known as C-VAG. That concludes my report on the RCTC Budget and Implementation Committee meeting. And we have our uh, general meeting for RCTC tomorrow um, at the Board of Supervisors Building. So uh, we'll have a report uh, from that for our next city council meeting. That concludes city council reports, brings us now to I two, which is the Employee Association Report. We have none tonight, that brings us to I three, City Managers Report.
Uh, thank you, mayors, members of the city council, I'm gonna keep it very short, just one item uh, tonight. Uh, as I always mention, we really have some of the best in the business and it's always good that we're recognizing, we're always, uh, always be recognized being um, the best in the business. So just recently, the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers, CSMFO, has awarded the city of Marina Valley for their very thought after, very lucrative innovation award. This is the top prize for that uh, particular organization. And this award was given to us because during the pandemic, as you know, we all, all worked through the pandemic, we're here and there was a lot of programs that we are needed to help our residents and our businesses. And uh, and this team really pulled together with the support of the mayor and city council, really put a lot of fantastic programs. But with all these fantastic programs, we also need to have good um, auditing and also good uh, accounting. And so we were able to come up with a fantastic accounting system to track all the different funding sources and over a hundred fifty different funds were, were tracked and probably in a three months period on all the different, different uh, funds and also fee and reimbursements to really provide a lot of this uh, services for our residents. So we were awarded that award and just wanna thank the mayor and council for their support. And uh, as I mentioned, uh, you do have some of the best in the business and uh, and this is another great win for the city of Marina Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, as always, um, the famous City Managers Report with some amazing news there, some good updates, thank, thank you so much. That now brings us to closing comments from the city council, first we have council member Baca Santa Cruz.
I'll keep this short, um, I just wanted to announce, um, the county supervisor has informed me that um, there is an individual artist fellowship that is um, open to any artists practicing any form of art in Riverside County. There are um, category titles of emerging artist fellow, that is five thousand dollars, established artist fellow, ten thousand and a legacy artist fellow for fifty thousand dollars. So the Art Council is looking to spread the word um, that these opportunities are out there for any um, resident of Riverside County. So I know that Marina Valley is full of artists at various levels and I just wanna let them know that this opportunity is available through the county supervisor's office. And as the time of the meeting is late, I'm going to defer the rest of my comments to another meeting, thank you.
And Councilmember Marquez is, is not here, we have uh, council member Bernard.
Um, I am going to keep this short, also, I'd just like to thank everybody that did come out tonight in support of the slate. Um, what you saw tonight is democracy in action. Also, I wanna remind everybody, um, cause we have not mentioned, and I'm sure uh, Mayor Cabrera will, that we have an art festival this Saturday and it starts at eleven and we are very excited about it. We are keeping an eye on the weather, Jeremy has informed me, we will have an answer by Thursday if it rains. Hopefully it does not, um, even if it's cloudy, please come out, we have a lot of things going on and we worked um, very, very hard to get this off. And I'm very proud to have our first art festival here. Um, and I will just close with, um, cause it's Women's History Month. So um, I will close with a quote from Shirley Chisholm, the first woman to run for um, for president and try to get the Democratic nomination. I am and will always be a catalyst for change. So in short, we must always push ourselves to change even when it's rough and it's tough and people don't think it's the easiest thing to do, because change is difficult and that's why it's called change.
Next we have Mayor Pretem Delgado.
Two minutes fifty-seven seconds, thank you to RSO and their traffic enforcement at all the schools. Um, great job to our city staff and their award, you guys are awesome. And I know that, I don't wanna get this watered down because I say this all the time, but we do have the best staff. So um, last Wednesday I met with Angel Marquez of Senator Padilla's office to discuss some needs I have in District Two um, and some funding sources, it was a very fruitful meeting and look forward to working with his office to bring some great things to my district and to the city of Marina Valley. On Saturday I attended, along with uh, some of my peers, the annual Marina Valley Unified School District Reading Festival at the Marina Valley Mall and it was great to see all the kids so excited about reading. I know I wasn't that excited at their age about reading, so it was a great turnout. In addition, I just wanna publicly oppose the ridiculous proposed California Assembly Bill AB seven forty-two that will ban the use of police canines to apprehend suspects or conduct any form of crowd control. This bill is authored by Assembly Member Cory Jackson, Mr. Jackson, you are supposed to be representing all of your residents in your district, but I wanna tell you, you are not. You say the canines are a cruel and inhumane practice. These canines are just another tool for our law enforcement community to use when a criminal is putting your families, our families in harm's way. A couple of years ago, I had a female try to gain access to my house with the kids sleeping in their rooms. I was able to arm myself, but when we called the Sheriff's Department, they were there pretty quick. As she left my front door area, they could not find her and take her into custody until the canine arrived and found her hiding under one of my cars in my driveway. The use of the canine possibly saved her life because my family was very scared and I certainly did not wanna use deadly force, but the safety of my family was my priority, so I was grateful for the use of the canine and the resolution he provided. She went to jail and my wife and children were safe from a possible dangerous situation, partly due to the use of the canine. Now, that is just one example of the great job these dogs do. These dogs or tools are used to apprehend people that break the law and may want to hurt your, our family. Bloodhounds have been used in law enforcements in the middle ages, they even searched for Jack the Ripper in eighteen eighty-eight. However, canines were first used as apprehension tools in eighteen eighty-nine. So to say they are cruel and inhumane is rhetoric that is just not true. They help resolve issues that may not otherwise be resolved without the escalation of force. They have a badge and are considered police officers, so to eliminate them through an assembly bill is just ridiculous to me. Simply put, they give law enforcement another option other than the use of deadly force. Deadly force is the absolute last option in the force continuum. But if these tools, canines, are eliminated from that continuum, it may prove to be a huge mistake in our society, in our state. Please do not allow this assembly bill to pass as it just, is just a bad bill that will remove another tool for our law enforcement professionals to use while they protect our families. I do not oppose this ridiculous proposed bill as law enforcement professional myself, rather a citizen of California where this has been introduced. So I have nothing else, please have a great week and be kind to one another as we go about our daily lives and we'll see you here next week for our post, what is it called, study session, I can't remember.
I think most of us are probably half asleep right now, but um, uh, thank you for that and uh, just brief closing comments as well. Um, this weekend on Saturday, I was invited out and had the opportunity to throw the first pitch at a local Pony League softball game over at Morrison Park. Uh, first time I've ever thrown out a first pitch and this is uh, the ball that I actually got to throw and it was signed by, I think you can see it on the camera there, signed by all of the um, uh, the girls on the softball team. So really, really nice opportunity there, again, my first time, you'll only ever see it on TV, so to do it yourself is, it's, it's different and special. Um, so I wanna thank the president, the coaches, the parents and the students for the work that they're doing here in the community. Um, it's the largest single league uh, in the city of Moreno Valley. Um, so uh, really appreciate them giving me the opportunity to come out and throw the first pitch. Uh, as Councilmember Bernard said, art festival happening at the Amphitheater this uh, this Saturday, so uh, definitely invite everybody to come out. Uh, if you haven't seen yet, uh, you will see on Friday, uh, there's a, a project that some folks at Marina Valley College and local artists actually put together, uh, I helped them out with it as well. It's, it's uh, an art piece, it's a mobile, the word mobile, um, three D manufactured at Marina Valley College and um, it's really different, so I don't think there's ever been anything like it and if you come out on Saturday, you'll get a chance to see it and take pictures of it uh, with it yourself as well. MBUSD Reading Festival, uh, was there in attendance as well, I had the opportunity to share a few remarks and um, uh, just congratulate the district and the students on their accomplishments as well as the teachers, the faculty and staff on everything that they're doing there as well, so that was really nice and um, heard a lot of good feedback because that particular event hadn't happened in, in a while, so a lot of the parents were very happy that that was uh, finally back and there was a lot of activities for the youth, so that was really nice and I think they had a Clifford, the big red dog and then uh, Thing One and Thing Two there as well, so it was really nice, uh, really, really nice event. Uh, so it's pretty late now, uh, contrary to what some of the speakers, speaker might say, I do work as well. Uh, I actually have a second job, I wish I had more time uh, to work more, but uh, you only have so much, so much time in the day. So um, with that, I do want to uh, just touch base on this particular topic. Um, that resident, Tim Kazet, uh, Tom Gerald, did I get that right? Tim Kazet, um, he, he did pass recently and uh, so just want to uh, close this meeting in memory of Tim Kazet, um, who touched many lives here in the city of Moreno Valley and has left a legacy. So uh, would like to close tonight's meeting in Tim's memory. So with that, we will adjourn our city council meeting at nine fifty-six PM, have a good night, everyone.